Boy, you really have to rub apple cup in today, too, and the shirt you wear.
Well, they did.
Yes, they did. It was not a good game. Well, next year, when the Cougars beat the Huskies, you tell me that, too. Let's just another guy.
Oh, we're ready to go. I think we're all here. Okay.
What?
Nobody likes me?
Ah, you can move closer if you want. I'd like to call the November 27th, 2017 Council Study Session with the emphasis on finance and economic development to order. And we will start with roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wales.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Um, excused vacation.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Are there any announcements, reports, or presentations, other than what we have scheduled? Yes, please. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is No Shave November, otherwise known as Movember. And it's a, to raise money for the American Cancer Society. And on December 1st, I will be shaving this thing off and making a donation to the American Cancer Society. So, people wondering why I've been looking like a...
Scruffy?
Scruffy. It's part of Movember and Men's Health Awareness Month.
I thought it was going to be for locks for love, and you were really going to let it grow long like Pelosi.
Well, it's, it's got to come off.
Any other?
December 1, I'm looking for.
Okay, another announcement, yes.
Where's the camera? You know this guy on the front page?
Gee, he didn't like that article.
No, that was a good article.
Nice, nice.
So, I'm going to give you another copy.
Good.
Because you don't know where they are.
Way to go, Rich.
Any other announcements?
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
There is an item added to the agenda under 3G customer service.
Hey. Thank you very much. And what we're going to try to do today is take a break around 7:00. So, you'll have to work with me and remind Rich and I if we start going past 7:00. With that, we are going to start with Ingrid and staff, and they are going to work with us on traffic calming program discussion. 20 minutes.
Hopefully, it'll be less than that, but we'll see.
But we ask for this, and we really do appreciate this.
Sure. So, for the record, Ingrid Gav, Assistant Director of Engineering, City Engineer, and I have James Webb, our Traffic Engineer, with me tonight to talk about our traffic calming program. So, several weeks ago, council had asked for this item to come forward to better understand kind of what we do for our traffic calming program. So, that's what this presentation has been built around. There we go. Okay, so, why do we do traffic calming? That's probably the first question, right? We do it to improve safety. We also do it to change travel patterns. And we've included a little graphic there that kind of shows what that improvement for safety is. When you look at pedestrian accidents with vehicles, the higher the speed, the less likely it is that you're going to survive that accident. So, what we want to do with traffic calming is reduce those speeds and reduce, cut through traffic through neighborhoods and other things like that. The traffic calming program has an annual budget of about $100,000 that's funded out of the REIT II program. How we actually proceed with starting a traffic calming issue is we usually do it because we receive a concern or complaint. We can receive those in a couple of different ways. We can receive it from an individual, citizen, or business within the city complaining about a particular street. We can receive it from a neighborhood homeowners association. We can also receive it from Auburn PD, who, as they notice an issue in an area. So, what we typically do when we receive those complaints, especially for the individuals and the homeowners associations, is we'll talk with them about what the program is, about how long it takes to go through. We'll also look to see, have we studied that particular area recently or not, so that we can see what the previous radar study in the area may show us. Then, once we've kind of looked at all that, made sure that we really need to do a radar study, we'll actually put it on the schedule. We typically have a backlog of anywhere from eight to 12 requests at any one time. So, it can take up to 12 weeks to get a radar study done from an initial request. The radar study is conducted on seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So, it gets some impartial feedback. And then, after we finish that study, we go through a process to evaluate that data and then look at whether or not there is, one, an issue that we need to address, and then, two, what are the appropriate ways to address the issue that we're seeing.
So, Councilmember Wagner.
Ingrid, do you have any way of evaluating data from events like the amphitheater?
So, that requires us to be studying at a specific time to see if there's an impact from event traffic going through a neighborhood. And we have done that in one particular neighborhood. And the results of that particular study did not show any true increase in the traffic that they were seeing in that neighborhood during an event. There is, a lot of times, a perception that there is an issue. And so, a lot of times, it's an education with the resident that's complaining or the business that's complaining about what we're actually seeing and what that traffic is actually doing. I don't know how many of you have stood on the side of the street when a car has driven by you at 25 miles an hour, but it feels a lot faster than 25 miles an hour. So, there's a lot of that perception in a neighborhood that people are going fast because they're going faster than you're comfortable standing next to. So, when we're doing the evaluation of the radar data, and you heard me talk about this a few weeks ago as well, we use our own guidelines for the traffic calming program, as well as national engineering standards. So, the nationally accepted standard is the 85th percentile speed. What does that mean, right? 85th percentile speed means it's the speed that 85% of the vehicles are going at or below under a free-flowing traffic condition. So, not under a stop situation, not under some sort of anomaly congestion situation, but what are they doing? And so, that means that about 15% of the vehicles are going a little higher. You see a graph on that slide that kind of shows what that looks like. So, the majority of the traffic is where you see the higher level in that parabolic curve, and the 85th percentile is to the far right. You can just barely see a very faint line. Councilmember Wagner.
This is the page where I wish there was a bullet that said, if there is anomaly data that indicates something like the amphitheater traffic, we will also take that into consideration. It's more in a bullet. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. And those are very limited situations where we have questions about that during amphitheater events. The more anomalous issue is when you have somebody who's going 100 miles an hour down a residential street. One of the things that we don't know at that time, because we're doing this through a radar box, that's a little black box, it's not us out there watching the traffic, that could be PD driving through responding to an issue. Not that they would drive 100 miles an hour on 25 mile an hour streets, but we don't know what that means. So, that's part of the reason why we don't base everything off of what is the highest speed. We look at what is the majority of the traffic doing to make sure that it's really appropriate for us to do something.
I think most citizens are more concerned about the 100 mile an hour guy than the 85th percentile. And most of them won't understand percentiles and statistics. So, that's what I'm wishing I could have, as you said, you are doing it. If there's something there at the amphitheater day, you look at it and consider it. I think that ought to be on that slide for presentation to other people about this.
So, you're jumping ahead a little bit on me, so I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. So, one of the things that we find in doing the traffic calming studies, the radar speed studies, is 90% of the time, they fall within our parameters and don't require traffic calming measures. The issue that you're addressing with the higher speeds is bad behavior by drivers is not something that can typically be remedied by traffic. If they're choosing to speed, and they are choosing to speed at excessive speeds, a sign, a speed cushion, those are not necessarily going to stop that speeding from happening.
Maybe they'll at least show that data to the group you're presenting to and say, yeah, we see this, excuse the explanation you just gave, there's not much we can do about that.
And that's basically what this chart is showing, is it's showing what that speed data is from an actual speed study that we did on a residential street. So, the thresholds that we use for when we determine whether we're actually going to look at traffic calming for a roadway is for local streets, so our residential streets. When it's five miles per hour over the posted speed limit, then we'll look at, okay, what can we do to try to address a speeding concern here? And again, that's on that 85th percentile speed. When it's an arterial or a collector, we'll look at it when it's at about 10 miles an hour over the posted speed. So, once we've made that determination, then the next thing that we do when we consider whether we want to apply a traffic calming measure, and there's several different measures that can be applied, is we need to look at, what are the roadway characteristics? What's the traffic volumes? What's the collision history? What's the availability of funding for the treatment that we may be considering for that particular issue? Is it a transit route? Is it a school bus route? Is it a snowplow route? What are those things that we need to address to maintain the road before we look at putting in traffic calming measures? And then, once we have identified a traffic calming measure we want to install, we also think about, do we need to survey the neighborhood? So, remember, a lot of times, these speed studies start from one person's complaint, not necessarily a neighborhood's complaint. So, before we go and do something that is going to impact the neighborhood, either creating additional noise or inconvenience, we want to survey the neighborhood to make sure that this is something that the whole neighborhood actually wants us to do. And we typically do that survey, and we try to get at least 50% of the residents responding to us, so that we can get a good sampling of the neighborhood of what they want before we move forward with that type of measure. If it's something more like a radar speed sign or just signage that we're doing, those are things that we would do without doing the survey. So, I'm going to have James talk about what our tools are.
So, I'm going to run through our primary traffic calming tools that we have available to us if we make the determination that it's appropriate to install something. The first, I'm sure you're all familiar with, these are speed cushions. You'll see these on a lot of local residential streets throughout the city. They are, they've proven to be very effective at reducing 85th percentile speeds. They're a relatively inexpensive treatment for us to go out and install. Some of the downsides of traffic, of speed cushions are an increase in noise and an increase in pollution associated with vehicles having to slow down to go over the bump and then speed up again on the far side of it. They're not particularly aesthetically pleasing. They do not work well in locations where we have vertical and horizontal grades, because you can't necessarily see them until you're right on top of them, and that creates an unsafe condition. And we wouldn't use these on anything that's a classified roadway, like a collector or an arterial, or anywhere that we plow, because they'll get plowed off. We also can use raised crosswalks. These are very similar to a speed cushion, except they extend the entire way across the roadway. They don't have kind of the cutouts in between for emergency vehicles. Similar kind of benefits in terms of slowing vehicles down. These have an additional benefit of improving safety for pedestrians by giving them a dedicated location to cross at. The one in the photo is the one we have down on M Street, about 32nd Street.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
How well do those rumple strips do with the street cleaners? Since they have to use the brushes and everything and go over those?
The speed cushions?
Yeah.
We don't have any issues with the street cleaning in those. They do fine with those. They're set away from the curb a little bit, so there's room for the brushes to go down between the cushion and the curb and get that cleaning done. The next one, when it comes up? It's very suspenseful. There we go. Our speed feedback signs. We have these at a number of locations through the city. We've recently been installing some new ones. The one in the photo is up on 55th Avenue South, up on the West Hill. Basically, a permanent radar box with a sign that tells you what your speed is when you drive towards it. So, you'll get a warning if you're a certain amount over the speed limit. Otherwise, it'll actually show you what your speed is. There is some cost associated with this kind of a treatment. And we can only put them in in locations where we either have a power source already existing or where we have the ability to add a solar panel to power the sign. This is one where you can see the solar panel on top of, on top of it. We have had issues with vandalism with this type of an installation in a number of locations. People seem to enjoy shooting at them. So, and there's some maintenance and issues associated with that. We can also do things to the roadway surface that have a traffic calming benefit. This example is Lake Taps Parkway, where you come down the hill and they take the off-ramp to go to Terrace Drive. This is a high-friction surface treatment. There's a, both a visual color change to the pavement, the surface of the pavement, which has some effect on slowing drivers down. There's also a textural difference that you can feel when you drive over this. It's a lot rougher than the pavement on the approach to it, and that also encourages drivers to slow down. The other, and the primary benefit of this kind of a treatment is, as the name says, high-friction surface treatment. So, where we have locations like this, where we've had a history of runoff-road type collisions, where people are coming down the hill too fast and they can't make the curve at the bottom. With the change to the surface, they'll slow down a little bit, but then the high friction also gives them the ability to maintain control of the vehicle around the curve at a higher speed, so they don't have the crash in the first place. Neighborhood traffic islands. These are treatments we can put in at intersections. You basically build a little raised circle in the middle. This is in the Auburn 40 neighborhood, the north end of I Street. They can reduce speeds through the intersection. They have a visual effect of breaking up a long, straight street, which has some benefits to slowing vehicles down. They also have benefits to safety at the intersection as well. They do have some potential issues associated with having to remove on-street parking to be able to accommodate these. They also may create some issues with cyclists, and they can have issues with where we put driveways adjacent to these as well.
Councilmember Wagner.
This is the first time I've seen you mention cyclists. Some of the others, like speed humps, have an effect on cyclists, don't they?
It depends on the treatment for cyclists on the roadway. So, I mean, the speed cushions, you have the gaps in between for the cyclist to go through. I've written to, let's go over a number of times on F Street, and it's kind of fun to write over them as well. These, it's, it's more about, if you had bike lanes on the road, you wouldn't necessarily be able to fit the bike lanes through the intersection with adding the circle. So, then the cyclists have to merge with traffic. So, there may be some potential conflicts associated with that. Typically, these would be on more local neighborhood streets where we may not have that kind of a bike facility, so it may not be an issue. It just depends.
You consider sharrows, the bicycle sharing thing as a tool, or not?
Not for traffic calming, no. I wouldn't want to say that that would have any effect. It, it could if there was a cyclist on the road, but potentially, when there's not a cyclist out there, and I don't know that I necessarily want to use bikers to slow down cars. I wouldn't want to. We also can do roadway narrowing, and that includes an assortment of different tools from curb bulbs, chicanes, putting in mediums in the middle of the roadway, and road diets. The photo shows new ones that were constructed as part of the MultiCare emergency room improvements on Division Street. They have benefits in slowing down vehicles because you're narrowing the roadway down. They also have safety benefits for pedestrians by also slowing the vehicles down and by narrowing the pedestrian crossings, so they're less exposed when they do cross the street. The downside of these is they can have some impacts to on-street parking. A positive of this would be it gives you more space to accommodate pedestrians at intersection corners, and it gives you more space to build ADA ramps, which can prove challenging. Sometimes, we don't have the space, a lot of times, to put them in the way they should be built, so that helps with that as well.
Okay, so, we also thought we'd go through kind of what did we do in 2017? So, we conducted over 40 speed studies throughout the year. Again, as we noted earlier, more than 90% don't typically trigger a requirement for traffic calming. Of those that did, we've put in three radar feedback signs at three different locations within the city. We've installed speed cushions on one local street. We installed the high-friction surface treatment that James mentioned earlier on a principal arterial. We completed a road diet on one minor arterial as well, so narrowing down the lanes, narrowing down the number of lanes, so that people will drive a little more slower through that roadway. And then, we referred 10 areas to Auburn Police for emphasis on traffic enforcement. Again, that's one of our first steps for an area, is to see if we can get response with PD, just doing some emphasized enforcement in an area. So, with that, questions?
Councilmember.
Scenic Drive. I have friends up in Scenic Drive, because I lived up in that general area for 30 years. And I've had a call several, well, months ago. Which one it is? So, if, if the neighbors pass the muster of 50%, that doesn't really mean a lot, then.
So, the first step is the radar speed study to determine whether or not traffic calming measures are appropriate to the street. Some of the issues that you have with scenic is there are a lot of curves on that roadway and a lot of sightline issues there for placing any kind of cushions, speed cushions on there. The other side, we've studied that general area numerous times over the last probably three or four years, and none of the radar speed studies have come back indicating that they exceed the 85th percentile for being over the speed limits significantly enough for traffic calming to really match.
So, do we go back and advise the parties in writing?
Yeah, so if they've, if they've, if we receive the complaint from an individual and they've given us their contact information, then yes, we respond back with what the results of the speed study are. Again, that can take sometimes up to three or four months for us to complete, to get through and do the speed study, and then to do the evaluation and get back with them. But we always do that follow-up.
What kind of post-installation data do you collect to show that the calming measure you used made a significant impact?
So, it depends upon what we've done and what the situation is. O Street Southeast would be an example where, after we installed the speed cushions, we let them be in place for a little while, and we went back and we did another radar speed study to see whether the speeds actually reduced and that 85th percentile came down. And in that particular case, I believe we went from, I want to say it was 35 to like 21, 85th percentiles.
Have you done any post-evaluation data on the speed feedback sign up there on 118th?
So, speed feedback sign on 118th went in and within about a week was shot, and so it was not functioning. So, no, I have not, because it has not been functioning long enough to actually have an impact at this point.
Because what's happened up there is the kids are coming from the neighboring cities and starting at the bottom of the hill, and they're using it as a stopwatch. And they're racing now, two cars at a time up there, and using that as a stopwatch or a whatever to check the speed. So, you know, it only takes one or two people. It doesn't mean that we can meet the 85th percentile, you know, with just one or two people. But that's become a collector site for after-school and whatever, gangs that are meeting over there in the bridges. And then, they go over there and they do that racing.
And that is an emphasis area for PD to go out and do patrols, especially around when school lets out for those very reasons. Again.
Yeah.
Sinage, speed cushions aren't going to address that situation.
I would look forward to, though, when it gets functional. I think it is functional. Maybe, I thought it was functional. We could get some post-data, because then we could share with the neighbors out there. Thank you. Thank you for the 26-minute presentation. Oh, one more. Councilmember Pelosi.
So, the total budget is, was it $100,000?
It's $100,000.
And how much did we spend?
For this year, for everything that we did, we came pretty close to spending that whole budget.
And you, can you give me a cost for a speed bump? One speed bump?
So, they're in pairs, and it's usually somewhere between $2,000 and $2,500.
A pair. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good report.
Next, we're going to move on to Resolution 5330, a deed restriction. 10 minutes. We only have four left. No, I'm joking.
You can do it.
You can.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. For the record, Kevin Snyder, Director of Community Development and Public Works. This evening, I wanted to speak with you briefly regarding a resolution that is scheduled to come to you next week. It pertains to a deed restriction requirement. In 2014, the city received a grant from the Washington State Department of Ecology to assist us in purchasing some land. This land was utilized in the Mill Creek Wetland 5K project that you should be familiar with, based on tours and other presentations over the years. A condition of that grant acceptance was that we place a deed restriction, basically a covenant on the land that it would not be developed into the future. And so, as, as we go towards closing out this grant, we are wanting to come before you next week to get your concurrence through resolution adoption to authorize the mayor to execute the deed restriction document that would be recorded and filed with Washington Department of Ecology. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Can that event, can they come back, can the city council come back and change the regulations where you're restricting it to have future, you know, construction? Could they come back and reach?
I guess the short answer is, anything can happen, but there would be a penalty for that, because ultimately, if we did not comply with the grant, we could be on the hook for paying a portion of all of that grant amount back, which was $532 to $1,000. So, short answer is yes, the longer answer is probably not a good idea.
Any other questions? Kevin, would you like to stay with us possibly and help us with ordinance 6667?
I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager.
Great. 2017 Comprehensive Plan Map and Text Amendments. And we have scheduled here 15 minutes.
So, Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager, and like every year, I have before the council this evening, um, annual comp plan amendments. We have a long list of items that we're proposing as amendments this year. Um, as the council is aware, the city adopted a substantially revised, uh, comprehensive plan at the end of two thousand and fifteen. We've amended our comprehensive plan each year. It's usually for housekeeping kind of items and also in response to private applications, but we did a substantial upgrade in compliance with the, um, periodic updates that is required by the Growth Management Act. Um, so, our comprehensive plan is our overarching kind of policy document that informs all of our other development regulations, and our development regulations are required to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, as the council is aware of. Um, we have two types of amendments. We consider either policy and text amendments or map amendments. So, there's an adopted land use long-term pattern for the city that is the map that's contained in that document. And then we have two sources for those comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, there's things that we identify over the year or docketed items that are actually city-initiated amendments, and as well, there is also, uh, private applications where somebody can propose by application to us a change to either the comprehensive plan text or the comprehensive plan map. Under state and city laws, we're limited to amending our comprehensive plan only once a year, except in very limited circumstances. So, as a result of that, we have to advertise a deadline by which we accept private applications each year and, um, and then roll those in so that we can consider all of the amendments at one time. Uh, so this year, in April, we advertised in the newspaper and posted on our website, sent out to interested parties, noticed that we were accepting applications up through Friday, June ninth. In response to the advertisement, we only got one application by a private party, uh, and it's a request for a map amendment, and I'll go into a little bit more detail of that in a moment. Um, the city code provides a process for submittal of the privately initiated amendments and for the general processing of the comprehensive plan amendments. So, it goes through a process where the planning commission considers those applications. They actually hold a public hearing on those, and then they make a recommendation to the city council. So, we're in that recommendation to the city council part of it. The planning commission has acted, and they have made a recommendation, and it's to inform the city council of the planning commission's recommendation. As I mentioned, we had a, a large number of items this year, mostly, uh, private, pardon me, mostly city-initiated amendments. Uh, we had a number of items such that the commission asked us to break those into a couple of different nights of hearings. So, this slide shows you in those two different blocks, the two different hearing nights that, and what the items are that they considered. So, the docket that we considered consisted of nine policy and text amendments and eighteen map amendments. I do need to say that most of the city-initiated amendments this year were as a result of adopting an updated comprehensive plan, and as we spent some time with that, uh, you know, you, you don't always get things right the first time, and we had to make some map refinements and some text refinements to correct some kinds of things that we saw in, in terms of errors or opportunities to increase consistency between the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. So, that's largely what the text and map amendments are that are city-initiated. So, on October eighteenth, the planning commission held a public hearing on the first group of amendments, and that was on the nine text amendments and on, uh, the first three of the map amendments. The, the staff report that is part of your package goes into some greater detail on all of these. Um, also, contained within that staff report is also a kind of thumbnail maps of all the changes, but there is, uh, larger-sized versions of all of those maps contained in the working binder that the planning, that the city council has received. So, in this document are all, and hopefully more legible versions of those maps for your reference. It also contains, um, the text amendments in terms of the, uh, or school district capital facilities plans, the city's capital facilities plans, and then the text changes six through nine, which were four different subject changes within the land use element of the city's comprehensive plan. So, there is a strike-through version of four pages from, excerpted from the land use element showing, uh, changes for four different purposes. And mostly those map changes, pardon me, the text changes to the land use element were, again, to increase consistency. We found that we had left off some implementing zones for some of our comp plan designations, so we were seeking to correct that circumstance, make sure they were referring to the right implementing zones for the comprehensive plan designation, and, um, to, to, to change the title of one of the land use designations in the comprehensive plan to avoid some duplication and confusion. So, all of those are generally to correct errors or to, to improve the document.
Now, on the incorporated school districts, they didn't, this isn't as specific as to speak to the locations of new schools?
Each of the school districts develops a capital facilities plan, which is based upon their anticipated capital needs for facilities. It, and, it only can be for capital facilities. It can't be used for ongoing operation and maintenance. So, it can be influenced by what they foresee as future needs for school sites.
Okay, thank you.
So, on October eighteenth, they conducted a public hearing on the first group. On November first, they conducted a public hearing on the second group that consisted of, uh, all of the map amendments. Um, so, map amendment four through seventeen of the city-initiated amendments, and then the one privately initiated map amendment. What is different this year also from previous years is that as a result of, um, Ordinance Sixty-Six, Fifty-Five that the city council adopted in June two thousand and seventeen, um, they provided for a change in procedure that allows the planning commission and the city council to consider associated map amendments concurrently. So, by that I mean if, uh, able to change the comprehensive plan map and the zoning map concurrently, so that all of those changes can be considered at one time, and it limits the need for a subsequent hearing to be held by the city's hearing examiner separately on the zoning map amendment. So, it allows a more expeditious process, and three of the city-initiated amendments have associated zoning map amendments or rezones, and then the one private application does as well. So, that's detailed in the staff report and in the recommendations by the planning commission. The planning commission did, is recommending approval to the city council of all of the amendments, uh, policy and text amendments one through nine, and comprehensive plan amendments one through seventeen, as well as the private map amendment and, and the related rezones for map amendments six, seven, eight, and for the private map amendment by Nexus Family and Youth. So, uh, the, I, I apologize for the length of the staff report in there. Had to take three different staff reports that were presented to the planning commission on different items, and because we have to consider these all at the same time, they're all rolled into one staff report for the city council. Um, but the staff report provides some detail on each of the requested changes and what the designation change is, if it has that associated rezone application with it as well. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Jeff, um, in your, in your experience, do property owners shift their property designation for tax purposes in some cases?
Rarely I see them do it for tax purposes. Uh, we, historically, we have gotten private applications because they're seeking to do some development, and, uh, they're doing that maybe when it makes sense in terms of it being at a margin of a designation, so they can more easily change the boundary that might be related to that land use designation identified in the comprehensive plan. Um, there's other ways they can potentially affect their tax assessment, so I rarely see them doing it through, uh, comprehensive plan, a map amendment, or rezone.
Councilmember Wagner.
Jeff, talk to me about all the changes from open space to other categories and why we did that, and whether, for instance, that has implications.
Sure, sure. We had, um, what, with the comprehensive plan that we adopted in two thousand and fifteen, at the end of two thousand and fifteen, we established a new comprehensive plan map land use designation of open space. Um, that was done largely because we recognized that there's, there's a purpose to, um, identifying those kind of properties and to foster, uh, a designation that is more compatible with the way they might be used. Um, inadvertently, however, that designation was applied to, uh, some properties that were, uh, city-owned park properties with active recreational uses, um, or city cemeteries, or a muckle shoot tribal cemetery. And we're recognizing because of the active recreation components and the development status of the city parks and the cemeteries and, and that they may need, they're more actively managed and that they may need, need more flexibility in, uh, related development regulations and zoning development regulations, that it didn't make sense to have those as an open space designation. So, we are seeking to change the comprehensive plan designation from open space to institutional and to change the corresponding zoning from open space to the I institutional designation, to recognize that there's more active management of those facilities.
And what about tax implications?
Well, that's largely determined by the county, um, or the counties that each of those fall into, but I don't see that, uh, since we're changing them back to, uh, an institutional designation that's probably more consistent with the public designation that they used to have prior to the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan, it probably doesn't really make a much change from the public designation or P one to the institutional. So, it's probably undoing it in a manner that is, is more compatible with the way it's been historically assessed.
You apologize for the thickness of this, but it's way better than the three inches that it's got it from.
Can you, I turn to page thirty-two of two fifty-one. Starting with, um, CPM number two. Explain to me, uh, what is happening here.
Oh, sure. Um, so, I could actually, uh, also call that map up.
All right. Um, I love maps. Okay.
So, um, this was a property that is proposed to change from, uh, a multifamily designation to an institutional designation, and that's because this property was the subject of a, uh, pre-annexation agreement before this property was in the city of Auburn. Uh, so, this property used to be part of a larger, uh, apartment complex development, and they needed city water and sewer services. At the time, they were still in the county and developing in the county, but we were the recognized service provider. So, as part of that pre-annexation agreement, there was a, a, uh, agreement struck that they would develop some park land, and at the time of annexation, they would convey it to the city. So, they did follow through with that part of it, but it was not a separate parcel. So, it was annexed in two thousand and eight, then they went through some process to segregate it as a separate parcel so that it could be conveyed to the city, and, uh, then they asked that that be held off for a while. Well, they did some refinancing of the property, uh, including the apartment complex. So, it, it has been developed as a park. We maintain it because, uh, and it, and it has been conveyed to the city now. Uh, we do own the property, and now we're seeking to do the cleanup action of making it consistent with other properties of park ownership and designating it institutional.
So, this is just a cleanup?
Yes.
So, what's the name of this park?
I, I'm not sure this has a name yet. Uh, there, uh, it is, it is listed in our parks plan.
And that's all I needed to know. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Very much.
Right on time, Chair.
Okay, let's move on to Ordinance Six, 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 Eight. Uh, the two thousand and eighteen school impact fees, which I saw listed in this previous agreement into the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager, and this item is related to a portion of the last item, since both topics are related to the school district's capital facilities plans. The last item in Ordinance Sixty-Six, Sixty-Seven was related to incorporating by reference the capital facilities plans into the city's capital facilities element of our comprehensive plan. By contrast, this one is, uh, in Ordinance Sixty-Six, Sixty-Eight is related to amending the city's code section nineteen oh two to adjust the school impact fees for the year two thousand and eighteen based upon the contents of the capital facilities plans of each of the school districts. So, each year, the city amends its comprehensive plan to incorporate the capital facilities plans prepared by each of the four school districts that fall within the city's boundaries. These are incorporated by reference into the city's capital facilities element, and the school districts consist of the Auburn School District, Derringer, Federal Way, and Kent School Districts. Every year, each of the districts provide us with their capital facilities plans. They provide us with a cover letter indicating whether they're requesting any increase in the fees, and they're also provide us their associated environmental review documents. And they can act as their own lead agency for purposes of the environmental review. Uh, for each of the districts, these, these were submitted in accordance with, uh, with Auburn City Code Section nineteen oh two oh five oh, which specifies the process. Um, again, all of the capital facilities plans for each of the school districts is found in this notebook under the policy and text tabs, as well as their cover letters and their environmental review documents. The Washington State Growth Management Act, uh, and its amendments require that local governments make provisions for schools and provides the authority for collecting school impact fees on behalf of each of the districts, and these are, fees are collected by the city one time at the time of initial development, so that new growth and development can create addition, that creates additional demand, pays for its proportionate share of the cost of new school facilities that benefit the development. Uh, the fee is based upon dwelling units, so there's a separate rate for single-family residential and a different rate for multifamily residential, and the impact fee calculation used in each of the capital facilities plans is based on a formula specified in the city's code and is based upon fifty percent of the need, assuming that, uh, part of the funding also comes from other sources beyond just development. Uh, the city code also sets forth, at least on an annual basis, that the city council review the information provided by the districts and determine if any adjustment in the fee is needed. It specifies as well at nineteen oh two oh five oh that city council is not obligated to accept the fees proposed by the district, uh, as contained in their capital facilities plan. So, there's a couple of points that are elaborated on in the staff report for Ordin- So there's a couple of points that are elaborated on in the staff report for ordinance sixty-six, sixty-eight that I just wanted to point out, and that is that in the case of the Derringer School District, with submission of their capital facilities plan, they indicated they were seeking an increase in both fees for single-family and for multifamily, and in the past, the city has adopted fees consistent with unincorporated Pierce County, so that development that occurs within the city is not disadvantaged by locating instead in the adjacent unincorporated area. So draft ordinance sixty-six, sixty-eight reflects a fee increase to only three thousand four hundred and eighty-five for single-family, which is less than the three thousand seven hundred and sixty requested by the district, difference of two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's in order to remain consistent with Pierce County's rate that has been the practice of the city council in recent years. Included in your package was also a copy of the Pierce County Ordinance twenty seventeen dash seventy-eight that shows the same fee that Pierce County is adopting.
You know, it seems that we have a number of school districts in our boundaries, and that Derringer and Auburn and Kent are pretty consistent, but we also in the north end of our, northwest end of our city have Federal Way schools, and the amounts that they're charging kind of blow you right out of the water.
Right. So that was the other item I wanted to point out, was that in the case of the Federal Way School District, their CFP justifies a large increase for the multifamily residential school impact fees, results in a change of eight thousand three hundred and eighty-six to twenty thousand eighty-six, increase of over eleven thousand dollars.
Isn't that a backhanded way to decrease multifamily dwellings and in an area that also impacts socioeconomic portion of a community? I mean...
In the case of Federal Way, their student and demographic forecaster for their school district indicated that there was two factors that were largely contributing to their request to change or their request to increase. And that is, for a longest period of time, Federal Way did not have any multifamily development occurring in their district, and as a result, they defaulted to a overall King County standard, since they didn't have a local rate that they could use based upon their experience. Then there were three large projects proposed in the city of Federal Way that resulted in a substantial increase in the student generation rate for those three projects. So then they had to start using the actual observed or measurable rates as a result of those projects. So they were finding out that they had a significantly higher student generation rate of more than one student per unit. And in addition to that, they also have convened their facilities planning committee that determined that they had additional needs for housing students through development of additional schools in the future. That's also going to be subject of their bond issue to help pay for as well.
Well, if you work off the premise that a lot of the families that are in multifamily dwellings tend to be a little bit more on the high need socioeconomic supports, and then you raise it up so high in Federal Way that you can't afford, a builder cannot afford to build anything, that's just going to drive more of those people south, and we already have a seventy-five percent or between fifty-five and seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch rate. So is this a way to just keep everything moving south?
I don't think that is the intent. I think it legitimately is based upon these factors. I did check to see kind of what, how other jurisdictions were responding to that issue. I did, Federal Way, the city of Federal Way has not acted yet on any changes to their school impact fees, so I could not find any identification of what they were proposing to do with this dollar amount requested pursuant to the Federal Way School District capital facilities plans. I did find, however, that King County had, and their committee had already considered this, and they were proposing to adopt this twenty thousand dollar school impact fee, and their ordinance is not finally acted upon yet, but it has moved out of committee and as of November eighth, and is proposed to go to the full council for consideration.
Did you say that Federal Way was changing their student generation rate based on actual measurements of their apartment places?
Yes.
Are we planning, do you know if our school districts are planning to do that when the reserve and all these others come along?
I know that they have, that the Auburn School District in particular, I know, has a similar concern about the, about measuring it after the impacts kind of occur. So I know that the school districts, as a result of that, have some interest in revisiting state laws about that authorize school impact fees in that manner.
See, I don't have a problem with impact fees, and I would hazard a guess that in most of our apartments, not our senior living, but most of our apartments, that there are lots of kids. But I think that the Auburn School District has kept up with it and built along with it. And now we have a school district that maybe hasn't kept up with it and is making it so costly that it's going to drive people this way so that we're not balanced throughout the south end. I have a real problem with this.
The other thing I would point out is that the portion of the city of Auburn that falls into the Federal Way School District is largely a portion of the West Hill.
Yeah.
That's not an area, that's not an area where we have multifamily zoning. It's an area that has single-family zoning, so it's not likely that we're going to see multifamily kind of units coming into that area that would be affected by this.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree, because I've been up there, but what I'm saying is what the action of the whole Federal Way is going to cause things to move this way. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Just following up on that as well, because they did have a substantial increase on the single-family residential as well.
Yeah.
So it's going to have some impact, potential future development there may be on the West Hill or similar areas like that. So to me, it looks like it's just a single-family increase is just kind of in line with what they propose to do in the multifamily increase.
Correct.
To kind of keep it consistent.
They do have a requested increase for single-family residential.
Substantial as well.
Councilmember Wagner?
These regional implications that the deputy mayor is pointing out make me think that future town regional council ought to be doing some oversight of school fees as well as transportation and land use, but I haven't heard anything about them thinking about that. Have you heard anything?
I know that the school districts have a lobbyist, and I know that they're, that they've been talking to them about this issue. Whether it has gone anywhere in terms of having any dialogue about it or making any requests, I don't know.
I think something, Mayor, that we might want to think about for lobbyists, if some legislation comes along that might prevent what's, what the deputy mayor thinks is going to happen, I think it'd be a good thing to do, because, you know, you don't want to force people to move all around because they're rich, with five hundred bucks a month, which is kind of what it looks like happened, might happen here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Jeff, I have a question on the Auburn School District, page one five oh and one five nine. My question is, in the single-family dwelling, there's a decrease of twenty-one hundred dollars. Can you tell us why that's decreased?
Well, the rates usually go down in response to them completing facilities or having less demand for facilities, because they're, the capital, the premise of the capital facilities plan is they're anticipating their needs for the next six-year period, and they have to justify what they need in that period to support the rates that they develop. And so if there's a reduction, it's generally in response to they have less demand for facilities because they've completed some facility recently? So it, I don't know precisely.
It could be based on their enrollment projections. Also, they're doing six remodels, which are going to increase some capacity at six schools, and then there's the plan for two new ones, so...
Why would they want to decrease?
Uh-huh, they got all the money, they, they did a...
Oh, the bond.
Yeah, so they don't have as much of a, yeah, I think they've kept up with growth, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wagner?
Yeah, that's what I was going to point out, is I think their bond issue that they passed is covering a lot of their future expenses.
Right, so, yeah, and our calculation, again, is based upon only fifty percent of what they anticipate their need is, assuming that they make up others from state legislature funding or bond issues or other sources.
Thank you.
So ordinance sixty-six, sixty-eight is, been developed to include the requested increases by the Federal Way School District as indicated in their capital facilities plans, and that it also includes the reduction for the Derringer School District based upon being, maintaining consistency with the Pierce County rate. And so I, with the city council's acceptance, I propose to bring that ordinance for action at the December fourth meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any more questions, thank you very much. Keep your eye on Federal Way. Let's move on to item E, King County franchise fees. And we have Kevin Schni, oh, we don't have Kevin, we have, thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Tobin, Utilities Engineering Manager. A year ago, King County Council passed a fee, passed an ordinance imposing a fee on utilities that pass through unincorporated King County areas. This would be typical utilities like water, sewer, and storm. This only affects the three small areas of the city of Auburn that I've highlighted there in red, where we have water, sewer, or storm utilities that pass through those areas, or that actually may provide service to some of the properties within those unincorporated areas. Based on the methodology that King County has proposed to impose this fee, the initial cost to, for, across all three of these areas would be about two thousand dollars per year, and that would be split approximately equal across all three utilities. And so what we'd like to do is to get some input from the council tonight on whether they would like us to pass those costs along to the property owners in those areas who are receiving service from the city, or whether we should just pay for those pretty small annual fees out of the utility funds and then reflect that, that cost out of our, the rates that we impose on all of our customers.
So is, this is a fee that King County is going to collect the money. We collect it and we give it to King County because these three locations are unincorporated.
That is correct.
And King County isn't providing the service, we're providing the service, but they're going to collect the, and we're going to collect the fee and pass it on to King County.
That's correct.
Huh, Councilmember Pelosi?
Lisa, has this gone before the Planning Commission?
No. Has not.
Is it planned to?
We had not planned to do that. We are a, we have a franchise with King County for our water and sewer facilities, and one of the terms of that franchise agreement, which was entered into a number of years ago, is that they have the right to impose such a fee. They put the ordinance, the draft ordinance out for review last, a year ago, November, and we commented on it, and the mayor signed a letter opposing this fee. They took testimony for a day and then passed the fee as a revenue measure.
So have we acted upon similar policy in the city of Auburn in unincorporated areas? Do we have anything?
I'm not aware of any.
Do we have anything to weigh on, weigh against?
Not aware of any. This is, this is basically King County's way of trying to balance their budget. Yeah, candidly. In the agenda bill, Lisa also pointed out that you have the water and sewer districts who are much more affected than the cities, because they're basically, all of their facilities are within typically unincorporated King County. They are much more affected than we are. They may consider going forward with a lawsuit on this to challenge whether King County has the authority under state law to actually do this, but at this point, with what is written in our franchise and the ordinance that King County has passed, we currently have the potential fee structure there. So the question for council is, how do we want to address payment of what the bill is that we're going to get from King County that we need to pay?
I always thought, I thought that our honorable counsel shared with us that a fee was not a tax, because with a fee, you got a service, and I don't see where King County is providing a service, so this is a tax.
I'm going to turn to City Attorney Hyde, do you want to talk to that?
This is a subject of some consternation among different jurisdictions. May actually be that we're going to move into an area where I might suggest an executive session might be appropriate. I'm not saying at this time, but there are some legal issues that stem from the language of the statutes, plural, and the court decisions that relate to this.
So before Holman says anything, because this is a perfect opening for John on annexation.
Bless your heart.
Absolutely. I mean, if we have been wanting to be able, I mean, this is crazy, the only way around it...
I agree a hundred percent with you.
It's to annex them, so they don't have to pay this. I mean, this is, I'm sorry. John, please put it in your scholarly whatever, and this is crazy. Please.
Growth Management Act, Washington State, allows us to annex islands and peninsulas with a councilmatic decision. So may I suggest to my esteemed colleagues that we incorporate these, and then the problem becomes moot.
So for the two island areas, those are in our PAA. For the other area that's at the southwestern part of the city, that is not within our PAA, I believe that is within Federal Way's PAA. So it, that's a little bit more complicated, we can't just go and annex that area, so we may still have some issues with that.
What's a PAA?
Potential.
Potential annexation area.
Word.
So basically, the area that's been identified for the city to actually annex.
Okay, so, yes, Councilmember Wagner?
Over the years, we've had lots of people use our right of way for their particular profit-making businesses like PSE, and I've asked if we could put a fee in like this, and I told it couldn't. So I'm in favor of lobbying Olympia to say this isn't a fair tax and not allowed. But I tend to agree with the, with Councilmember Holman that we ought to annex these kind of places where we're allowed to...
That's agreement with Deputy Mayor Wales.
Well, you know, we've been looking for, we've been looking at this issue for a long time, and here is a prime mover to show that there is a break for the people there. They're getting, not only are they getting quality service that they get from all of our utilities, but they're going to be able to avoid, because I wouldn't think we'd absorb that... but they're going to be able to avoid, because I wouldn't think we'd absorb that fee, we would pass it on. And this would be further supporting them wanting to be with us. Councilmember Holman.
The question that has been put before us, though, is who pay, you know, in the interim, who pays the $2,000? All 80,000 of us or just the people in those islands and peninsulas? And I propose that the people in the islands and the peninsula pay.
Yeah. Councilmember Wagner.
Well, it may cost us more in accounting to do that than what we're going to collect. And so, except for the, the benefit that Deputy Mayor points out of encouraging them to annex, I don't want to pay the accounting department $5,000 to get a couple thousand dollars back.
I, I, I think that if the, this, the difference is that little, that it would be worth it to clean up everything. And this is something that we've looked at for a number of years. Maybe Shelley can come back to us at our next study session and we talk about, you know, what it would cost to pass it on. And we start looking at the issue of annexation.
It might be appropriate to also recognize that even though the city has authority to take certain action in connection with annexing islands, the citizens of the islands can, by referendum, put it to a vote. So the ultimate decision may not be that of the city council.
I need to have a, oh, yes. Councilmember Pelosi.
Do we know the population in those two areas?
It's pretty, it's pretty de minimis. There's about 20 properties on average across each one of them. And we're talking about a monthly fee of between $1.50 and, and $3. And so I think that the, the cost of billing them is certainly a very good question of whether it would cost more to bill them than to, than what we would collect. Also, one of the larger of the three utilities share would be the storm facilities. And I don't believe that we're billing, that we would not be billing any of the people in unincorporated King County for storm service because they're not part of our storm drainage system. So $800 of that 2,000, the storm utility would have to pay out of its own pocket because we have no legal recourse, I believe, to be able to charge them unless the city attorney says differently.
So it's a conveyance line, basically, that connects our system that just happens to pass through King County jurisdiction.
This is a tax. Let's let the silence, you know, generate something.
So, to kind of put it to a close, I think, what we're hearing is that in the interim, we look at what it's going to cost to potentially bill it out to the individuals versus absorbing it within each of the utilities. And then add to future discussions the potential for annexation. I don't know that there's enough room on the next study session for that. It might be after the first year.
And also, I think that we're interested in having some discussion about whether this really is a tax or a fee. I mean, if, if there gets to be some regional leadership of some other cities that are saying, you know, they don't want to do this either, I think that we would be interested in hearing about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a final point on this. Some time ago, we presented some information on the annexation issues. And we can bring that back so that you're more acquainted with these factors.
And shame on King County.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to ordinance F. Do you think we can do it in 15 minutes before our break?
I didn't know how we were at F for 6669.
I know we're on poet laureate, which is F.
Perfect. Oh, I can do this for five minutes, two minutes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wales, Daryl Faber, Parks Arts and Recreation Director. And tonight, I'm representing the arts arm of our department. And this ordinance 6669 modifies the existing ordinance, Auburn City Code 2.82.020. And it basically expands the residency requirement of the poet laureate. And what it will allow the Arts Commission to do, then through the city council, is to change the geographic restriction and allow the selection to be based on their work, the quality of subject matter, their involvement in the literary community, and how their experiences and sensibilities could relate to Auburn. Right now, it's restricted to the Auburn city limits. And what they're hoping to do is extend it to South King, North Pierce County in addition to the city limits. We have a current nominee who happens to be an instructor at Green River College in the literary arts, who is a great poet. And also, we've had other people who have been interested in this position, but the restriction has not made it available to them. So this is similar to the City of Tacoma that allows Pierce County, as long as they have a relationship with the city of Tacoma, we'd be doing the same thing, basically, here in Auburn, where as long as they have an experience and a nexus to the city, we have the opportunity to select them as the poet laureate. Be happy to answer any questions. And this was also voted on at the November 7 Arts Commission Board. It's their recommendation as well.
House Member DeCoursey.
So, Daryl, I'm page 186. Could you give us an example of actively engaged in Auburn's creative community?
One of the things the Arts Commission looks for is that they've potentially been involved in some of our other readings are through straight poets or perhaps at our community events where there's been opportunities for readings through our Arts Commission. So they're hoping that it's not just somebody who lives outside of the area and talks about their background growing up in North Dakota, but really relates to Auburn.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So, that same page, 186, item, capital A, under 2.8220. Does not have to be a, oh, oh, I, I saw the word I wanted and it's there. I apologize. I got it. I got it.
Apology accepted. And I don't know what you're apologizing for.
Just interrupting you.
That's fine.
Any other, oh, Councilmember Holman.
It would have been better accepted had it been in rhyme.
The ordinance is set to change the poet laureate.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We look forward to this coming forward. Okay, we're going to take a, a break. And then we're going to come back and hit G because there's no way with customer service dilemma. Session two, with those scenarios, it's only going to be 10 minutes. So, we'll be back here exactly at seven.
Oh, he did. I was in the mayor's meeting. They called him, Dr. Bill, on the phone. He said they have a meeting stuff with the three of us.
Okay, they're really excited.
Good. Yeah, he sounded like a great guy.
His dad used to be a teacher and he taught at.
Oh, so that makes me a good, good leader.
So they're really, they're really excited about it.
We'll get him signed up. We're meeting.
I told him when I found out that he was great.
And he had only half a year.
Yeah, there's like a list. You can sign up for like twice a year, four times a year, then we find a math out here's the thing that's expected. And whether they have the resources, like when we say spread twenty yards apart, do we buy the park or do they have the money for the park? We'll meld it together.
Yeah, because I noticed that. I'm so excited.
Well, good.
I think they do guys.
Couple of cents.
When I use the.
The skin. One.
Top of the market.
There we go. Boy, I think that's.
Until we were, uh, we were each our directors so many years ago.
Okay.
So. Let me tell you this story about the N O soldier. Certainly, we're a lot of structure because you. But he dedicated me. To the N O soldier. And there's the president. Never leave Maria and all that. Gather out. There it is. It's called. Sir, what am I to like it? This is something like. I have little kids. Shooting. It's his name. Somebody said.
What? What? What, you got him named?
In tune with the N O soldier. He said. That he raised it. As a. Tailor, he was now. As a soldier. Not much of a soldier. Really. Just watching. Deadlines. They were all. His last paper. They would come up with. All. That's the huge chance. And then you know that. To get that home. I didn't get a call from them. I didn't get a call from them, so. It's usually how home is, they basically seem behind it. By that. The line. For instance. I mean, I have people I can. I'll say if I could. But certainly, I would have. And the answer is that was tiny, was really down on them. Because he was actually. Now I was wondering going to the big bad university. You may encounter engineer types there. Here's what you do if you need to get out. Take your right index finger and stick it up their left nostril. Now, Dad, I don't think this is gonna work. You know, and then, um.
Oh, God.
My Japanese room. My dad was gonna come to this. Is he gonna stick his finger on my nose? No, he had. He wasn't gonna do that. My dad didn't remember ever saying it. He was wondering. These are advice I got from the old man. My dad's meant to be, yes, the kid.
I'm so close to camp that I hear it. Oh, tons of stuff going on. Well, I thought that was four, three, four o'clock in the morning. I don't know. I'm dead, you know, because I made this one with you all discussion. Okay, it's amazing.
He was asking a question.
I just can't get away from that. I know.
Oh, yeah, that's how it goes. And so.
You don't get it all. Yeah, it's pretty. Really easy. Um, and I, um.
Is that what you said? More colorful language. Though you don't know that language, I know. I should have. Sometimes I get frustrated. I want to get right to it. So it gives the. Sometimes you just can't do it all the time. If you need explanation. Yeah, I always get like an hour off. I'm afraid asking. There's something I'm gonna get.
You know, we went to my daughter's house and.
But I do my dad.
And that's my first thing for you. And I was here. Now she's got a one-year-old. We were all in. And we were. And then I. And I. I don't know. I don't think it goes.
How's the guy?
Paper rattling over there. At the door.
Somebody.
Over there. People were thinking. Sitting there. There's all my stuff out of my purse. Going through all my, my wallet. Oh, God.
I should have seen how long I seen.
I took a picture. I took a picture and I was gonna call my parents, but they didn't. It was these two hilarious little pipers. This guy.
Oh, she's gone. I mean, she came.
There it is.
Great.
Because my other. There.
Over you at twenty bucks.
Well, that's what she was looking for. Because I. I was a little girl. And then I watched my kind of. Chickens and I have my. And she's in there my. Found your hidden.
How am I saying?
Ah, girl.
Said Serena, it's.
Ain't you dead yet?
You know, they just. These guys like.
You're talking about Kay Meyer, aren't you?
Yeah.
God, girl.
And they obviously. That's. Me and Serena talked a bit. Former driver in Washington, how to drive. Yeah. I think this plan would be able to better. I was. Come on. Is there any? That's not exactly. How coming? Yeah, and definitely gotta be. It's not. It's ninety cent. Did you ever? Up, up, there you go. Well. I had an aunt I thought she was.
I hear all no end.
Jesus.
I'm ready for that.
Charlotte. She didn't want. It's kinda like. Really. You're doing.
There it is.
Yeah. They're leaving.
Yeah.
We're gonna change their items to such things. Well, we can leave in the wrestling hall. While at the Battle of the Vol. Restful. Hello.
She's a monster. So. And. Beautiful. She's so cute. She's so.
She.
I'm not real for that issue for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. What is this? What is this? What you're preparing? This is. Always seem like. Girl, she's. Yeah, the news is that. And everything's got a. Mark. That is. Here. Have. It's a terrible commander. It's. You have the dollars. It's. I know. Has been. Situation. And they show us. Somebody pointed out a weird thing.
Stop that.
No.
Nobody knows.
Yeah. It's almost like we used to. That's what happened last. Go fast.
It's. It's going wrong.
You ready?
A runner.
Mister Personality.
Okay, it's seven o'clock and we're ready to go back to work. We'll finish off item G. Um, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Wagner to lead us through finance and economic development. So let's talk about customer service dilemma and.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development Services. And, um, just a reminder, uh, that we started back in October with our first session on, uh, going through some customer service dilemmas that uh, we all face, uh, as a city, uh, and with our, uh, many of our mutual customers. Um, this is session number two. I think back then we committed to coming back about every month, every six weeks or so, uh, to bring a couple more, uh, customer service dilemma examples for the city council. And as that indicated in the memo, um, uh, obviously input, dialogue, different perspectives and thoughts on any of these dilemmas is always welcome. Uh, some of it is just to highlight the type of scenario that, that, uh, uh, we, we face sometimes. So some of these offer no perfect, um, uh, way of managing through and making every single person happy. Um, and I think what I'll do is, um, um, in the memo, there's two scenarios provided. So I think I'll just read, uh, first scenario, read that paragraph, and I won't read everything that's after that in terms of the questions that come up. The first scenario, uh, in the memo, which is called Scenario Three, it says, "An engineer representing a developer approaches the front counter with a request to submit development plans for a new project. The city's development engineer looks over the submittal package and finds that there are half dozen substantive items that are missing from the package. These are items that are included on the application package checklist that is attached to the application. The development engineer asks the applicant if the missing items are available. The applicant indicates that they are still prepared, being prepared and should be ready in the next month or so. The applicant also indicates that the developer insisted that the plans be submitted today." It's a really quite common scenario for us to face probably, um, a dozen to twenty times or so a year, this type of scenario, uh, we're presented with. And what, one of the things that challenges, I think, staff is, is how you manage the customer service experience at the counter, uh, and during that, uh, submittal, uh, or that, uh, attempted submittal versus managing the overall customer service experience from application intake to getting through the process as smoothly as possible and getting to a, an approval. Uh, so sometimes when you are at the front counter, it doesn't feel good, it doesn't feel right when you're interacting with the customer, uh, to not accommodate what their request is. And I think so. Sometimes I know I can say personally, I found myself in a situation where I've been more accommodating at the counter, uh, only a few weeks later, a few months later to go, gosh, I wish I would have maybe not done that, uh, because in the end, it hasn't been the best outcome, uh, when you look at the overall process, something that can take weeks or months to get through. So I have, uh, indicated on, uh, the next page, just, uh, several considerations, um, uh, related to that kind of scenario. And it's really kind of putting it back as an open discussion is, what is the best, uh, I mean, is that good customer service to accept it? Even though it, uh, there's an, an element of incompleteness to it? Or is there a good customer service way to say, you know what, it's really in your best interest or your, your client's best interest to not accept it now and wait till it's, it's fully complete? Um, and that that will in the end make the overall process go faster. At least that's our perspective is that it'll run more seamlessly as, as time goes on. Uh, so I won't go through the eight considerations. Hope you need them. But, uh, thoughts, uh, reaction to that scenario?
Councilmember Pelosi.
I wouldn't have accepted it. Because you can get yourself into trouble like you just said. You're going down the wrong, wrong path and it could cost the city money in reviewing something that isn't, is incomplete. And it's also harming the customer as well.
Councilmember DeCarsey.
I, I agree with Councilmember Pelosi. It, it's, it sets a precedent when you accept it. And the development community is a small community. And it travels fast. For somebody to come in with an incomplete package, they haven't done their due diligence, they didn't do their job, basically. And it's, it's our diligence to require them to take it back, like we said, the latter, until that package is more complete or complete and bring it back to review. Spending the hours that staff has spent, all different departments have spent reviewing it, and then having to review it again is counterproductive. So it just, to me, it just doesn't work.
Oh, Councilmember Holman.
I think when we've had misunderstandings with developers, uh, particularly over the comments issued, uh, the one we had with the Seattle developer who, uh, I answered those questions and then I got two hundred more questions back, was a situation that was caused by early acceptance. Because their answers from the first questions generated more questions. So, uh, I very much concur with my colleagues here. But I think what we need is a C C letter back to the developer saying, this was missing from the package before we can accept it. So it puts the onus for a complete package back on the contract engineer, uh, where it belongs. But it has to be, that, that developer needs to be in that loop of why. Because I'm sure that engineer has told.
Yeah, a different story.
That this is a ninety percent drawing or a hundred percent. In fact, it's not. And so it needs some review time to generate such a form letter, but they need to be C C'd in it so that they realize they may have just paid for the full meal deal, but they only got the, uh, two for five dollar special.
Councilmember Wagner.
Well, what I hear as complaints sometimes is so-and-so told me, and there isn't anything like that, that, uh, so maybe you have to record and, and transcribe your actual conversations in order to keep straight with them and what they still really do need. The other thing I think might be helpful is a typical complete package that you could give them, even though that might be costs a hundred bucks to hand that to a guy and pass that on into fees for now. It's when you say, it's not complete, and they say this, they give a title of what it's supposed to have. That could take quite a few different forms, as you know. And while you would hand them a, a typical package, it wouldn't be exact for their project, but it would give them one more idea of what you mean by complete.
But you do include an application packet checklist, so it has all of those things on there. To me, this was just a story of somebody who hadn't done his work and was trying to get it moving forward because they hadn't done all the, the prep work that was necessary. They were just taking shortcuts. Yeah. Councilmember Way.
I have to agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
It looks here like they were just, you know, they said next month. So in, there's half a dozen of the applications or pieces missing out of this, so next month. And what would you do? The following month, the following month. So I, I would definitely not even accept that and tell them to come back when it's completely finished.
Thank you for that. I, you know, one of the things about, um, including the owner is, is that, you know, some things are so obvious. Uh, at times I think we get caught up in the interaction with the professional architect or engineer, and it can be easy to forget to include that owner, that developer. And in many scenarios, I think what happens is six months earlier, a date has been set, a project scheduled date to say, you know, we gotta try to get the submittal in by May first. And, uh, the six months goes by and, you know, a bunch of work's been done, but there's still some pieces left. And it gets submitted because that's staying on track with the project schedule that was developed, uh, prior to the city's involvement ever even. But, you know, I, we've had a few conversations recently about how to plug the developer or the owner into those decisions. Uh, because it's, it can be easy to forget if you're dealing with, you know, whoever you're dealing with at the counter, that there's someone paying a big bill behind the scenes and they should be more plugged into that communication.
Councilmember DeCarsey.
Is there, to follow up on that, there's a checklist. Is there a checklist that's actually submitted with the package that the applicant does check off?
Yeah.
So there's a possibility that I can probably copy that, if you will, that actually goes to the guy who paid the bill, the developer. So they can see that that actually has been accomplished by their professional engineer.
Councilmember Wagner.
But how do you, the checklist has probably been filled out by the engineer, not by you guys, because you haven't accepted it yet. And so it may be filled out fairly wrong because he's got one sentence describing site plan. You know, it's like plans could have geometric, they could have utilities or, or not for all that stuff. And so, you know, I, I think the checklist is, is not a, a solution at all. I think some kind of a typical package or a thing like that would be a lot more meaningful for both the owner and the engineer.
Question B then is, how descriptive is the checklist?
Uh, the checklist is descriptive and it's, uh, I think it, in some cases, it can be even a little intimidating for the average person to pick up the checklist and see how comprehensive it is. But for the design professional who's used to, to doing this work, that probably provides a really good recipe to follow. Uh, and there are probably things that we can do with our checklist of, you know, even if it's two columns where the, the applicant fills out one side and says, yes, 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 I've got it. And then as we're at the counter, we go through it and say, yes, yes, no.
That's.
It's missing. I mean, there might be a way to kind of do both.
I think that's what we're proposing is that, that we've got the engineer that's coming in with a partial product and we need to cover ourselves by letting the developer know that we received before he gets a chance to cover his by saying, oh, that terrible city of Auburn. Yeah. Yep.
Um, the next scenario, Scenario Four, again, I'll just read it. Uh, property owner seeking to convert an existing older single-family residence to an office for an attorney. The zoning for the property allows for the conversion. Owner knows that they will have to do the upgrades to the bathrooms, doorways, and install a ramp to meet the federal and state ADA laws. Uh, since the current residence only has one exterior onsite parking stall, the owner would like to also add five more parking spaces in order to accommodate the, the needs of a couple employees and visiting customers. Owner is upset when they are told that the city code states that the pu- public right-of-way improvements shall be brought up to current standards whenever five or more parking stalls are proposed. This means sidewalks, landscaping, curbs, power lines, and lighting must all be brought up to current code. Staff indicates that they may apply for a deferral, but the owner is unhappy with that option since this only means that they will have to make these expensive improvements sometime in the future. Code does not give staff the authority to waive or deviate from these code requirements. Um, while the, uh, the scenario of a house to, in a, to a, like a law office, um, may be fairly specific, a scenario like this that triggers improvements, um, we face that half a dozen times a year. Where, right? The question that comes back, with new construction, everybody gets it. When it's conversions and modifications to existing, that's where, uh, sometimes there, there can be a disconnect or a feeling that that the city code goes too far.
I, I've experienced this, um, in relationship to a small business, um, over there by Denny's. And, um, they're doing a gangbuster business and they want to expand. But they can't expand because they have to come up with additional parking. And so, um, I don't know, in my mind, though, I'm staying out of it, but in my, I don't know why people can't park just down the street. You know, why does the parking have to be exactly on-site when we don't require that for some of the businesses here on Main Street? And I see that some of these requirements really stifle, um, our small businesses that are ready to go to the next, the next level of development and then probably go big. And so, um, um, I have a, I've heard this story numerous times, and it really does impact our small businesses. Councilmember Holman.
Um, you know, the question quite simply is, should staff ignore a, uh, city council's codified mandate? Or should we turn around and change the code? That they don't have an option, they, they have to follow our, our mandates. So this, this one doesn't end up in the staff's lap, it ends up in our staff. So are, do we want perhaps them to look at the code and come back to us with code modifications? Or do we want them to change the code that gives the city engineer some wiggle room?
What I'd like to do is see us start collecting a list of these instead of doing, you know, this is one that we might wanna to, to play with a little.
Agreed.
Parking. And build, after we go through these dilemmas, look at the ones where we might wanna look at them so that we do a bunch of them instead of just kind of one here and forget about it and two here. Councilmember Wagner.
We can do something a little bit like this about four years ago for the English Garden down here on Eighth Street in twenty nine. And allowed them to have not nearly as much parking as you'd think a nursery should have. And as I recall, we codified something about the level of business or some, there's some threshold that they.
For their fees.
Maybe that was just for the fees, okay. But, uh, on that way of having a threshold or tiers that require different amounts of, of off-site improvements might be an approach.
Councilmember Pelosi.
One way we could do it is return it to the planning commission. We send it to the planning commission, get their views. Um, I definitely think that the code should be reviewed and that, uh, I don't agree that staff should override, uh, the policy that's already set forth. And, um, I think that we're, we're trying to be a friendly, um, public works department, planning department. So I, we need to work, we need to work, uh, with the customer and yet advise him or her that, uh, we don't want it to. It's not a staff problem, it's a council problem because we set policy.
You know, we, and previously, um, only one situation comes to mind, but I think we've done it more. We've, um, are moving towards letting our professional staff, um, have some discretion. I think that we need to codify where we're gonna let them have discretion, but by allowing our professionals to, um, have that kind of discretion, it enriches their job performance too and their buy-in to what we're doing. So that it's just not running down a list and doing this. And so there's benefits besides just making our customers happier. We also have, uh, more engaged, really quality professional people that, um, can help us think through some of this. So I think that this might be something we want to put on our to-do list. Cause there might, you know, I could see us looking at five or six of these and deciding where we want to change and which ones where we want to allow how much discretion and that type of thing. Councilmember DeCarsey.
So I think, I think it's also important, you said about half a dozen a year. You know, what is our potential forecast for turning these residential units into business establishments? And you work toward the, down toward core, it seems more of a trend. And you work toward the, down toward core, it seems more of a trend in today's kind of a business climate where it's more, I say financially lucrative for, you know, property owner to do that rather than renting out as a, as a home. The other is that, you know, and I agree, we, we definitely need to, you know, take a look at the, the code issue on this and how we're going to address it through planning commission, through council. Um, but also it appears that, you know, the trigger is the five, so if we went back to these clients and said, well, if you have four parking spaces, you're not, you know, the problem here, can you get out of four? You know, that may be, maybe a doable situation in some respects for people or, you know, maybe your employees just park somewhere else. But as parking stills tight, you know, it's one of those things we have to address. But I think definitely looking at it for future needs where we need to go with it because it's, it's probably gonna be more upon us sooner than we realize.
You know, I think that on our list of, um, parking spots, we need to put sidewalks, we need to put landscaping, curbs, and power lines and lighting. Remember when we were talking about the Sonic Restaurant that wanted to put in, though we don't necessarily need another burger joint, but it would require them to have to put everything underground and whatever. I think that, um, on our list of things to look at, uh, we should look at those things too. I'm aware of it, a developer up on 108th Street that has property and in order to develop the property, even though the rest of the street, which is only about two blocks long, so it's not like it's a major arterial, um, he's being required or he was told he had to put in sidewalks and streetlights where there's none anywhere else. So I, I would like to put that on our list and have some advice from you as to how we could look at some of these codes.
Well, um, and so I'm kinda here in two parts to the discussion, both parts are great. Um, you know, of course, the question that was asked, and I appreciate Councilmember, uh, Pelosi saying this very directly, which is staff shouldn't, uh, go against the direction of what city code policy, uh, the council has set is. Um, so that kinda answers the question in terms of the scenario, but to the, to the to-do list, uh, back on May 8th, uh, we did present kinda the first of our to-do list for code changes and we're scheduled to come back on December 11th, that special focus area, and talk about what we've done and talk about what that next list is. So I wasn't intending for the, this to be a segue into that, but it's already kinda teed up for us to, to come back and talk to council in a couple of weeks of that.
Well, I appreciate that because I'm, I'm, I wanna, I'm glad we're doing scenarios that are followed with some ideas instead of what are all the problems in the world. So that's, I appreciate that. Councilmember, uh, Pelosi and then Councilmember Wagner.
I mean, I'm a honorary man.
Legendary, legendary.
Yeah, I mean, he's got the time over me.
Yeah. Not by much. Ten years, fifteen?
Jeff, uh, in addition to the, to the development centers that we develop and specifically tie it, tailored to the, our, our thought of how the city should be, there's also these manuals like the MUTCD, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That we simply put that in our, and then that gives another old book to deal with. Um, yeah, the book usually has some lines in there about professional judgment can, uh, alter these, these requirements, not exactly, but that's kinda the thought process. Somehow, I think we need to give your guys at the front counter some way to deal with those issues too, because it may say, well, now you gotta have this big radius on your street, uh, because the truck's gonna be coming through there. And the MUTCD is telling you that because of the kinda traffic that you're developing has to have. But, um, I don't want us to just, as we look at what we're gonna change, just, don't wanna look at just the stuff that we would change or invented stuff, but what we would give the staff the ability to-
Yes.
-work with on these thick books of national standards. Kind of in the, the vein of what Deputy Mayor said, I think it enhances staff's job a lot to be able to use their professional judgment.
So we're looking forward to December, December 11th.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelosi. I almost forgot you.
A couple, a couple other ideas maybe. Form an ad hoc committee. And that, and that ties in with timing, timing. Because a lot of these folks up, that come up there, man, they want it now, right? In many cases, and they can't wait two or three months. But if we were to do an ad hoc committee and then make a recommendation to, to the council on an item, that might speed things up, might help.
I, I do like the idea though of having the planning commission involved, so, you know, because, you know, they're the heavy lifters.
And under state law, any development regulation has to go through planning commission first, it has to go through CEPA, it has to go through 60-day state agency review. Those are exactly the things that, uh, preclude us from being nimble. Uh, they're, they're umbrella regulations that we have to operate under, you know, a lot of discretion to expedite those. I wish we did.
At the front counter, um, as, um, these professionals and citizens bring in their requests, um, I haven't heard one negative thing about the people that greet them at the counter.
Thank you for that.
No, I mean, they find them so helpful and interested and committed to, you know, they love them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, well, I hear they're great. Okay, so we look forward to December 11th.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Wagner to take us through finance and economic development.
Okay, the first thing we're gonna look at is the third quarter 2017 financial report. Is somebody gonna do it? Yeah, Shelley's gonna do the presentation.
Oh, it is? Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. I'm good. Thank you. Good evening. There it is. And I know there's an icon right here. There we go. All right. That is the wrong one. No, it's not. This wasn't the first slide. Okay, this is the third quarter financial report, that means it's through September 30th of 2017. This is the first graph, this, this graph overall shows our revenues year-to-date through September and our expenditures by area, like salaries and benefits, supplies and services, and other expenditures. We have three revenue areas that are just slightly under our year-to-date budget, and that's the development service fees, culture and recreation, and other fees and charges. And then when we look at this next, next slide, this shows our expenditure side only by department, and this is good, everything's in green, we don't want to see any red, the blue is the budget and the green is the actual expenditure. Now, you're probably wondering if you, if you, I don't know if you've read through this or not, there, in the detail, but in the development service fees, as we get back into this and we look at some of the slides, we'll be addressing that as well as the culture and recreation and the other fees and charges, what's dragging those down. The next page, the page 191 of 251, is a little more detail. And I'd like to point out that overall, our revenues are trending about $280,000 favorable, meaning we're $280,000 above our year-to-date budget. And then down at the bottom, the total operating expenditures are about 4.6 under budget. So the total here is a little, the, when I add the revenues of about 280 that were over and the under spend of about 4.6 million, we're a little bit shy of 5 million.
So you said the revenue is up, um, 800 or 200?
Total revenues. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, let's go down to the bottom. I, I was looking at the tax revenue, I'm sorry, 280. Total revenues are up 440, that's all sectors. I was just looking at the tax.
Okay.
Total revenues are up about 440. So if we add that, 440 to our 4.6 million down below, that's about 5 million, maybe a hair over. When we look at the annual budget, the 2017 annual budget, that first column of numbers, we see our operating revenues are 67,268,000. Then we go down to our expenditures and we see that there's 73,162,000. That's about a little bit less than a $6 million gap.
I'm lost, which page are you on?
I'm on page 191 of 251. Looks like this.
Got it.
Okay. First column of numbers, total operating revenues for the annual budget, this is just something I want to point out to you. This isn't really about the third quarter report, this is about our budget. And it shows that we have total operating revenues budgeted of about 67,300,000, it says 268. Then the very last number in that column is total operating expenditures and it's about 73,162,000. That's about a $6 million gap between our revenues and our budgeted expenditures. So what does that have to do with the third quarter report? As I, I like to see that structural deficit or gap, I like to see us trending with favorable revenue and under expenditures that at least come pretty close to that gap. And we're about a million short. That's just something to note at the end of the year, but it's showing that in all the years, we've had more of, over revenue, under expenditures to, to mine that gap. Don't have it here. See how we end the year. Part of the reason is we are flatlined in our general fund sales tax, our development fees are a little off this, this time, this year. And even though we have levied this year's, the loss of our bank capacity, and we're also receiving, uh, sales tax from the health through next, mid-year, next year, we're going to not have that revenue next year. So these are things that we're just, I'm just trying to set up, particularly next year when we go into a budget season and we're looking at these budgets and then how we, I'm going, I'm going to recommend that this gap between revenues and expenditures not be this wide, particularly if our actuals aren't meeting that gap.
So what impact does this have on the budget amendments and the increased staffing that we're proposing?
Right now, nothing, but in 2018, when we're preparing the 1920 budget, and we have several issues that we'll be looking at. We always end the year, have for last five years, where that delta between revenues and expenditures, we've always made up with actuals. The actuals have come out really close, revenues and expenditures have been real close, or even better, better than what, revenues are better than expenditures. So we wanna mine the gap, I think is the takeaway here. Okay. On page 190, do, you know, I don't know if you want me to go through this page by page, whether you want me to focus on the graphs, um, the, or focus on some highlights that I think that are important.
I think Bill prefers that we go page by page and see if there's any questions, don't you, Bill?
Well, that way, Rich won't miss anything.
Okay, if we could go page by page so that Rich doesn't miss anything-
Okay.
-and Bill feels the continuity.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to steer away from the executive summary that is on page 192 through 194, so we'll just get right into the detail then. Cause the summary is just of the detail. So the first revenue is property taxes. This is general fund portion. It's all general fund, property taxes. And you can see here, what, the dotted lines, what we collected last year, the grade areas are budget for this year, you see we're right on. We're gonna collect what we levy, that's how property taxes go. Sometimes it might be a little bit less, sometimes a little bit more, depending on if we have some, uh, people not paying their property taxes. And this is the graph that shows the, the five or six years historical, and it comes in twice a year pretty much, so that's why at the end of September, it's like, we only collected about half because we collected half in April and the other half will come in at the end of October. And it's here, I've looked, it's, it's come in. This is sales and use tax, net of revenues from construction. Again, the sales and use tax that goes into the general fund and there's sales and use tax that goes into the local street program. And we're right on budget, we're right on our dotted line, and we are tracking a little bit, a little bit ahead of, of last year, not a budget of last year, cause I think we put about a 2% increase in year-over-year for this. And as of the end, to update you, at the end of November, our most recent tax, we've received 13.8 million, we're about 260,000 over, um, budget, about a 1.92% increase over last year.
Why is this a straight line when we know a lot of spending goes happens at Christmas time?
That would come in, this is, this is how they have come in, that, this is how it comes in, and we'll see that in February, we see the December sales come in at the end of February. And it's not month by month, we're doing it cumulative. So you see a little bit more distance here between these two. So it, uh, if I showed it month by month, it would be more flat. This is a cumulative, cumulative graph.
But this is just for construction, isn't it?
Net of revenues from construction.
Construction isn't more at Christmas time.
Generally not.
No, it's gonna be cumulative.
Yeah, this is everything but construction. This is what goes into the general fund.
Okay.
And here's the graph, through, this is through September, through, end of September, yeah. But we've had two months added to that, October and November, and when I look today, it's about just under 14 million. We will make our budget here of 14.6 million. Now here's sales tax on construction. And at the end of November, this is only showing through September, and we were, we were 193,000 more than Q3 2016. And we have collected, uh, at the end of September, 1.8 million, but today it's 2.4 million, we're 48% over what we budgeted. And there's one more month coming in, I imagine this is gonna round out around 2.6, 2.7 million. And that's all your construction that's going on out there. And again, this is the five-year graph that shows construction on sales tax, 2.3.
They want these five-year graphs, Joe. They like all your five-year graphs.
I think that was your recommendation, if I recall. We listened. Okay, this is utility tax, this is utility tax on city-owned utilities as well as on the private utilities. And we're tracking overall right on budget on this. And here's the, the five-year graph. And here's the, the five-year graph. You see there's just a little bit of edging out, edging down.
Where's your Q and A stamp?
Cable franchise fee. I'm tracking a little bit ahead of budget on that and last year.
Shelly, you know, when we, we see these, we know that some of these things we can increase and some we can't. Like, I think in the last graph, utility tax, we could increase that by a catch-alaxy, didn't we?
You can increase on the city-owned utilities, water, sewer, storm, and garbage.
Right. Well, then the kind of concept I'm getting to is when we see these five-year graphs, it might be interesting to have a single dot there that says, this is the maximum you could get out of this source.
Say that again.
Well, if we raise our utility tax by 1 or 2%, I think we've got about 2% left we can raise. Where would that end up? It would probably end up at about 12.
Last time I looked at this, on the city-owned utilities only, a 1% increase in sales tax on the four city-owned utilities would generate about $600,000 a year. But we're maxed out on private utilities. Cable franchise fee. Tracking a little bit ahead on that. Here's the five-year graph. Again, we have three more months to collect here, so we will, we will probably exceed last year, 1 million. Here's the new utility tax on cable. We do have a lag because we received our first payment in April for the first quarter of the year. So we'll crew back in. We'll have the four months when we get there, but, back up. We're doing, we estimated about $250,000 a quarter. And we are tracking a little bit ahead of, about per quarter, as you can see in this graph. Business licenses. This is again, we bill these in December and about half come in in December and the other half after the first of the year. And you can see that in this graph. You can see how, it was like, wow, what happened here? We went up and down. But you add these two years together and divide it by two, it's about two, it's 226,000. So that's right there. It's just a timing issue. Building permits. This is one of the reasons why we are under development services. We see a little bit of red on that first page. This is last year, the dotted line. This is this year, the dark line with triangles, and it's below budget. And here's, as you can see, that this is what we call a, a revenue that is cyclical. It reacts to whatever's going on in the environment. This is one that the city really has no control over. It has to do with what's going on in the market. And grants. We have a lot of grants. And we're right on budget with the grants. We have, yeah, we're a little bit ahead, about $50,000 ahead. On page 204 of 251, the 2017 year-to-date budget is 4.5 million, and the 2017 year-to-date actual is also 4.5 million. There's about a $50,000 difference between. So that's rounded, the 4.5.
As I read this, is it, are revenue coming in higher on marijuana?
That state shared. Actually, the legislature rolled that back. We were supposed to get $30,000 this year on marijuana, but the legislative session took some of that money and we're going to get about 20,000 this year.
Well, that should take care of our law enforcement.
Yeah, really.
I mean, I argued this a year ago. I won't bring it up.
Well, we won't mention how much the state is getting off of sales. It's quite a bit. Charges for services, we see that through the third quarter, we're 3.5 million compared to 4.1 for the whole year last year. That's up primarily due to our guild contracts, our extra-duty contracts with our police. That's an in and an out. We bill the companies, the private businesses. We receipt the money in and pay the police officers for their work. And we have a little bit of an ad-vin fee on that.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Plane of order. This is Rich's meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Hey, Rich.
Shelly, besides the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe contract services, do we have any other that the APD contracts out to?
Oh, there's several contracts that they have. I don't have the list of them right here, but they, the mall, sometimes we'll hire some additional officers.
Shouldn't that be identified in here somewhere there?
What, the?
Police activity outside of the Muckleshoot Tribe.
Well, there are.
If it had been in there, I wouldn't have asked the question.
Well, would you see, well, no, that is the, the Muckleshoot that you see there. That's casino. That's the compact. That has nothing to do with extra duty. That's the compact that the city is paid.
That, okay. Extra duty is somewhere else?
Extra duty is on page.
That's right.
205 and 251. Two different things.
On 205.
But they do hire extra duty also up at the casino. And they do at the mall, a lot of businesses do when they are having an event.
Fred Meyer.
Fred Meyer.
I think, I think it would be interesting to the council if we knew some of those other ex, extra activities that our police force does.
There's several contracts. I think we have probably around 20 out there. Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Here again, development service is following our permit revenue, or our permit revenue is following our development service fees. There is a dip here because there was a refund given for a receipt that we took last April, and the refund was given in, it looks like in September.
And what was the refund for?
I don't know.
I'd like to know who and the amount.
Jeff's not here anymore, is he?
No, I think it was.
The amount of the refund, oh, okay, it was, I, I will look it up. It's 49,000 was the amount of the refund.
That was, uh, Thompson.
Thompson?
Troy Thompson, yeah.
Troy Thompson?
Yeah.
Okay. And here, that's where we're at. You can see we had a big year here. Again, this is one of the cyclical revenues that reacts to the environment, what's going on. Culture and Recreation is tracking on. Now, we're receiving more from our activities in parks for the recreational services. However, the golf course is lagging behind about 89,000. So they're kind of offsetting one another. So that's bringing it on. So, more works.
Mr. Fable, I thought we were having a colossal year.
No, the first four months, if you recall, were a lot of rain. Until spring happened, we were behind about 150,000. We made up about half of that. And we're also under expenditure the same amount that we're behind revenues. So at the end, we'll be net neutral.
Thank you.
These are our Culture and Recreation revenues. Five-year history. Fines and penalties. Not much going on here. This is what comes out of our courts. Our court.
Rich, can you give us a little more detail on the courts, why they're lagging?
Why they're down? They are down. Well, when I look at the, on page 208 of 251, I can look at the 2017 versus budget. It's the last two columns where it says 2017 versus budget. And we're down in civil penalties. And we are down in criminal non-traffic. And non-court fines and penalties. Which would, I think, be parking tickets.
So.
And the parking infractions right here.
So Shelly, if a, if a person doesn't pay, pay up, how much, how does that work? Not being, having not been there, I don't know the process.
Well, it's cash basis. It's not like, it's when the money comes in, the fine is levied by the judge or.
So do we have any accounts that have not been paid 100%?
I'm sure we do. There's a very high.
So what is that figure?
I don't, I don't know the figure. I'll see if I can find out what's on our aging.
Maybe if it's really crazy high, we need to look into it further.
It was with our court, when we had the court here, it was real crazy high.
I'm just going to jump in just to help out a little bit here. Significant control over what is paid and how it is expected to be paid is controlled by the court. But also, there's a program that our King County District Court is participating in that allows a number of penalties to be paid over a long period of time, so long as something is being paid. And that drags out perhaps many, many years. At least in some settings, the city's receipt of the ultimate fines that have been imposed. Court imposes them, but the court controls the requirements for payment as well.
And it's administered likewise by the court?
It's administered by the court.
And do they charge any interest fines?
Well, these are all fines, but I mean, you don't charge any additional penalties if you're late. Not unless you're, what the court could do, and the court has, has the authority to do, is to put somebody in jail to serve the balance of money not paid. But the court's philosophy and perhaps the reasons for this, although the downside is it's not money coming to the city, is that if a person is paying something on some of these penalties, even if it's a very small amount, the court will continue to allow them to make payment over a long period of time.
I would like to see us be briefed on what's the total outstanding and how that system works.
Well, I think that's going to be something that Shelly and I can work on putting together and raw.
Well, they will have it. They will have, they'll have the aging report.
Sure. Oh, I'm just saying, the different programs too. In addition to the aging, we also have the program that the District Court participates in, stemming from a Taquilla Court program that is now county-wide. We'll bring that, we'll bring information on that to you.
Yes.
Do you have, on, on this, do you have DV under, under this as well?
DV, DV goes through the courts. It would be in these fines, wouldn't it be criminal non-traffic and?
It would be.
Or civil?
It'd be criminal, it'd be criminal non-traffic. It'd be among the criminal non-traffic because there are other criminals.
There, yeah.
I'll, I'll ask my question when it comes to my, my time.
Again, there's the history. Photo enforcement was done away with in 2014. So that's why we see the fall-off there. Miscellaneous revenues. These are, have increased. We have several reasons why. And rents at our new facility, as well as we're receiving more interest as the interest rates have popped up there. And we have parking under, on page 209 of 251. There's the chart there that supports this graph with the detail. And you can see other miscellaneous revenues. 82,000, that's our parking that we're leasing. Rents and leases is the facility revenues, 144,000. And interest is up 114. So that's why we're going. And the interest, since the council passed the new investment policy in August, we should start to see even a little more. We've done a few things in accordance with that policy. We should be earning some more basis points and get that up. As stated previously, because interest rates went up so quick, they had hikes. They had three hikes in a row, December, December, March, and May. Well, they had three within about a six-month period. And to get those investments to meet that increase of what the T-bell was doing, which is very fluid, it floats what's going on in the market. We were pretty much in the state pool waiting for something to happen. And we're starting to move out of the pool. So we should start to see that come up on return. Real estate excise tax. This is REIT. We're not receiving as much this year as we did last year, but we will make budget. This is Councilmember Pelosi's favorite chart.
Only because we have a nice little kitty.
The dot right there, your kitty.
So we're kind of, license revenue is, looks like it's below last year, but the number of licenses issued looks pretty consistent. Revenue's kind of been up and down. And here's the cumulative chart.
Rich, Rich.
Yes, Will. Well, well, there's no agreement with the shelter help in that area.
Well, it's built into the contract that there will be an average of an 18% increase year-over-year for the first two years, or 36% in total. The management down there felt that they could achieve that. And that's what the city needed to have them achieve. And needs to achieve that probably over three or four years before we break even and come out. This is going to cost us a little bit more, but if they continue that growth, we will then have, it'll break us even and maybe have a little more revenue, licensing revenue than the cost, net out, positive versus negative.
So, so Director Snyder, you attend the board meetings, right? Could we have a, could the council receive minutes of the board meetings? Minutes? That way we can, we can look at it and be more educated.
So they're gonna take over issuing the licenses? And are we gonna run a backup system? Is that why it's costing us more?
No, we're not going to run a backup system. They're going to take over licensing and the resources that they're putting towards it. They're hiring staff. Part-time person, they're three part-time person, a full-time person that'll work on it part-time and two part-time people. They're advertising, they're marketing. And they think that they can hit it harder. We need them to hit it hard in order for us to cover those costs of them hiring additional people and their marketing that they plan on doing.
So currently...
Yes.
Currently now, we cover about, we charge about five dollars per license?
Oh, we charge more than that. The cost per license is about five dollars.
Okay. To us or to them?
It costs us five dollars and change, cost for issuing the license. And that's, that's rolled, all the costs rolled into that. That's marketing, that is staff time, that is our, our vendor pet data cost, all the costs.
So if it costs us about five or six dollars to collect that data, what do we cost, why does it cost fifty dollars for a business license? I know, why does that cost so much more than what it costs to do a pet, pet license?
I would have to, I, I would have to...
I'd like to know because our attorney shared with us that it's, our business license is a fee, not a tax. And it costs us fifty dollars to collect that data. Yet, of course, we don't care about if the business is neutered or not, or, you know, what color lab it is. But I'd like to know why it costs so much more to do a business license than a pet license.
Or staff involvement is my...
Yeah, maybe I could help at least answer some of that part of the question. I think one of the main differences between a business license and a pet license is that in business licenses, we actually do a physical inspection for business licenses that are new. And for, and we do have a much more involved process that there is more significant staff review time in, involved in than a pet license. A pet license comes in and, as Shelley indicated, it's, it's processed pretty expeditiously relative to just a single request. A business license come in, because Deputy Mayor, if you were new business and you came in, there is a committee of staff that review it. There is a physical inspection of the space. So there is more, as, as my instructor indicated, there is more staff involved and more staff time than a pet license, which can be issued the same day.
Okay, could you, if possible, send me a copy of a business license application? Great.
Yes, I'll send it off to the council.
Fund 102. It's our Artoral Street Fund. We have, from this graph, as you can see, we have been a little more active this year than we were last year. Sometimes, as we stated previously, these projects are delayed due to obtaining right-of-way acquisition or design challenges that slow down the process. But what we have here in Fund 102, as you know, the South 277th Street corridor improvement, that is going. We have spent one point five million of the four point three million dollar budget at the end of September. I'm sure we've spent much more than that since they send us a bill every month for progress payment. There are some of these projects that are delayed because the grants aren't coming through till 2019. And if you've noticed in our budget amendment number three, our midterm correction, we were moving money forward. We're reducing some street projects' cost for this year, our next year, and reallocating. But if the grants don't come in, we don't want to do the project and have two years lagged between getting the funding and have to do inter-fund loans. So we just, we wait till those grants are available. And then Fund 103, Local Street Fund. This again is, I believe, a timing issue. And we have a budget. These are all contracted out. So when the contractor goes out and does the overlays or the, for the neighborhoods and local streets, city streets, those bills will come, it's, it's one contractor. Is that correct? It does our local street program?
We have one contractor out there this year, but the way that payment for construction works is it's usually lagged. It will show up here for payment. So a lot of the costs will come in and they often...
Okay, so there's one contractor primarily for the work. The progress payments lag two to three months behind the work. This is through September, so the work was going on. We expect to see this next time we meet, probably in February, a year for the recap of the year. We'll see that that will be close to term by January. It is cyclical also. And Fund 105. This has our B Street reconstruction, Auburn Way North preservation, as well as the Fifteenth Street Northeast preservation. Again, we have some grant delays. Just sound Regional Council, the Fifteenth Street will be delayed. And again, in the midterm, you saw a lot of these project costs being carried forward, or project resources, costs rolled forward.
Shelley, I think we've had a little more explanatory notes in the past. True. Whenever we have a road-related graph, and it looks like we're not spending the money, you've always got good reasons, but I'd like to see it in the footnote. Rich.
Yes, Will.
I, I haven't seen, maybe it'll, it's coming up, the I Street roundabout. Is that in here?
It's in the 102 fund. This, which is page two fourteen, two thirteen and two fourteen. And are we near completion on that project? No?
Well, where?
It's under All Other Projects?
Well, what's the total on that project?
So that is, one point seven million is the estimated cost and the project budget is about one point eight or one point nine.
On the muff issue area? Now, will that be completed this month, adding the next, in December?
So we have, unfortunately, we have lost the weather for putting down the final lift of asphalt this year. So that will not be done until spring of next year. But we are continuing to do the signal improvements and do the rest of the work during the winter months. So you'll still see work happening, but we can't do that pavement till we get temperatures higher than where they're at.
So that one corner is going to be the way it is?
No, they'll continue to work on that corner. What we can't do is the final lift of asphalt, the final pavement over the whole road.
And are we, are we coming in at budget? Are we all...
Yes. So, and as I said earlier, the, the way that construction works is we get a lot of work done in August and September, but you don't, on these charts, you don't see those costs come in for being paid by the city until November, December. So you'll see that on both of, all three of these charts, you'll see that spike up quite a bit.
Because I was just, some people came by my house and asked me about, they continue to ask about that project. Okay, thank you.
And this is moving on into... I would like to look at page two nineteen of two fifty-one. This is the mitigation fee fund. This is what we've collected actuals. And you see the budget is the grid on the right and the actuals is the grid on the left. I'd like to point your attention to the fire impact fees for the actuals through September are about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. They had a budget expenditure of fifty thousand dollars out of there this year, which you probably noticed in budget amendment number three, which we'll talk about here in a bit. They've asked for another three hundred and fifty thousand to add to that fifty thousand, the four hundred thousand, because they're going to ask for us to send them that impact fee money. So that's just a teaser of what's coming up. So the money's there and they're asking for it. And then moving on to the enterprise funds. Our water revenues, we're, we're doing well. Above water, I guess it's...
Little accounting humor. Naval.
And all the funds, and all, and all the utility funds, we are, we have positive net income, which is a good thing. Before, even after depreciation, we have some income more positive, so. We do have debt service payments that we'll be recording in December, principal and interest. So that'll, that'll take a chunk. It's budgeted, you can see it there, so that, that'll, that'll hit it. Cemetery. The red line is the revenues. The blue line is the expenses. And as long as the red line's above the blue line, finance is happy.
Yes, true.
I think the cemetery, out of niches or whatever you call it.
The mausoleum is sold out. There's some that aren't occupied yet, but they're sold out. There's none available. We're doing a study right now on a revenue, a cost of recovery on those units to see if we should build another unit.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's the end of my graphs. And if you want more information, on page two hundred and twenty-four, two hundred and fifty-one, that's through September. That's the sales tax activity and where the sales tax is coming from. And the very first portion of this in the upper left-hand side is the construction activity. And in the purple column, the first item, one point eight four four million, that is the money that goes to the Street 103 Fund, City Streets. All the others go to the general fund. Were there any questions?
My packet doesn't include the chart, the eleven by seventeen.
You don't have this?
No, for some reason. Yeah, no, I do.
Oh, I...
I knew you were gonna do that.
Well, I'd be more than, we'd be more than, oh, thank you, Councilmember Holman.
That's why you have...
With his notes and everything.
Okay, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Good job, Shelley.
Always a good job.
Thank you, Ingrid. Some of the detail on those construction projects, I do not have a lens on. Finance is...
Okay, next is order six, six, five, which is amendment number three.
Budget amendment number three is a cleanup ordinance at the end of the year, where we go through, see where we're at, if there's any tidying we need to do in the budget. The big ones here, again, are the mitigation fees. Fund, there's a, on page two thirty of two fifty-one, there's a listing and you can see three hundred and fifty thousand, which is the fire impact fee that we're going to add to the fifty thousand that they have. When to appropriate a little bit more money for CDBG. They have about eighty-six thousand dollars in housing repair contracts and other professional services of about sixty-nine thousand. And we think that we'll have also a payment possibly at the end of December, first payment on the Lesgo restroom.
Yeah, it's sometimes hard to know specifically what caused an overrun, but what was the council chamber project overrun for thirty-two thousand?
Okay, that's, that's fine. What we did was there's two components of cost to that project. One was for all this technology. And one was for the construction. And there's two buckets of money that were being used for that. And the technology money is money that we received from Comcast. And we estimated we moved some of that money over to IT and some of that money was used for the brick and mortar, if you will, versus the technology. So we needed to refund or replace that funding. We needed to put that money back in, out of, take it out of the project, and we backfilled it with money from facilities. So it was, we used the wrong flavor of money.
Got it.
Solid waste fund increase, is that just because we're doing so much construction?
It could be, yeah, it's roll-offs. We, and so what'll happen if we don't increase this? There'll be an increase in revenue and an increase in expense because of the roll-offs. It's pretty straightforward. I would, do want to mention one more thing. The, the total amendment primarily is five hundred thousand dollars in solid waste is the bulk of it. But on page, the last page of this, which would be page two hundred and forty of two fifty-one, the net impact across all funds for this budget amendment is about seven hundred and fifty thousand, with five hundred thousand being the solid waste fund and one hundred and forty CDBG fund and some mitigation fund money. And so BA number four, which is the midterm correction, the, this BA three will impact these ending fund balances and we will true up BA number four to take into account BA number three. So all on the same page as we go forward into next year.
One of the issues I'd like some more information on is police staffing. The way I look at it is, you know, as a school, you know, you have a principal and a vice principal and you have teachers. And then for every so many teachers, you have this and that. You know, our police department is increasing, thank goodness. And I wonder if we're keeping up with the non-police officer assistance, the clerks.
Records, the records.
Yes, so what I'd like to see is maybe the last ten years, how many police officers, how many support staff? Because I'm not sure if we aren't getting to the position where we need to look at some more support staff that would really enhance the services that we're getting from our officers, so.
Some of that staff requirement may come from new technology. We get a bunch of body cameras, we can have, somebody's gonna have to review all those. So I'd like that idea, but I wonder if there's a way to somehow see what has caused some of these ups and downs? Think of what they might have been. But if we do on this year and start doing body cameras, there'll sure be a reason for that one.
Okay. And again, whenever, time is whenever.
Okay.
Thank you. So now we're gonna do budget priorities. And Kelly, Bob and I met and... So now we're gonna do budget priorities, and Billy and Bob and I met and tried to figure out the best to do this. It's a little bit abstract and a little bit detailed, so I'm not sure exactly how you're gonna approach it, Shelley, but this is preparatory to getting ready to do the budget, where you want to spend the money.
That's right. That's it in a nutshell. And what we need in preparing the budget, we need to know where the council's priorities are. And on page 243 of 251, we need to have a mayor and council update on the vision and the goals for the city, policies under mission statements are set to accomplish this vision. In our existing budget, we have eight goals or priorities that I've included on page 244 through 246.
So you still got the old vision in there.
Well...
The old what?
Yeah, I, when I, when I put this together, um, my cut and paste, I apologize for that. I noticed that today, so. We will get the new one in there. Okay, so, in addition to these eight goals that we have listed in the budget on pages 52 through 58 of the biennial budget, there was a retreat that was held a couple of years ago at Wesley Homes, and there were three, uh, three items that were addressed, and they had a ma, uh, a measurement. And they were to increase healthy city index, increase internet access to a G digital parity, and increase middle-income jobs. Many of the things that we do address those, but there are many strategies, goals, that strategies that support these goals that would require additional resources, possibly staffing, things like that, to accomplish. So what we need is to consolidate and come up with some major vision goals the city council wants. I am, I can show you some examples, but generally, of all the ones that I've looked at, they want a safe community, they want an active, healthy community, they want responsible government, they want good economic development. There's usually four or five of these, and they all fall pretty much along those lines. So then, what do you do to, to achieve those? What type of activities? So what we'd like, what I, I'm recommending, and I think the mayor also, and we've heard that we refine these and define these goals, these overarching goals, and what the strategies or activities would look like to achieve them. And the mayor would like to call a budget workshop with council to go over these. We also need to discuss our operating budget and our capital budget, and what those priorities are in those operating and capital budgets. We have other things to, we have things to consider coming up. We have, we have some resources to do some things, but what are the priorities and how we should spend those capital dollars? What are the priorities? There's a lot of things we can do, and there's a lot of wants out there, but where should we focus those dollars? As far as the operations go, you know, when we start defining the strategies to achieve those goals that council has established, you know, what level are we going to perform those strategies? There's different levels that you can do it. If we add new strategies or services or programs, and we don't have the funding for it, what, what are we going to reduce? Those, those are challenges that we need to deal with. And I pointed out to you that on the third quarter report, where we kind of have a million-dollar gap, minding the gap, we'll see where we end up with the year. For the last five years, the revenues have pretty much equaled the expenditures, or the resources have exceeded the expenditures. And we've done some good things, we've taken some money, and we've moved it, moved it over to our cumulative reserve fund, we've built up our reserves, and, you know, we had an ad hoc committee on streets and council through, well, the ad hoc committee has advised that they want to see $500,000 a year added to each budget and increased year over year. How, how are we going to fund that? If our revenues don't grow by $500,000 a year to achieve that, then what are we going to not do so we can do that? Are we going to earmark certain revenues to do that? That gives a real clear direction for staff. These are things we need to talk about. And where does that come in? Where we have some facilities that I know that the directors want to talk to you about, where we have, our police department is getting pretty full down there. Our MNO yard hasn't changed in, since I've been here probably 30, 40, 50 years, where, and we're versing, we don't even have enough room to park our vehicles down there. We're parking vehicles over here at the garage, and we're renting property. So what are we gonna do about that to plan for the future? We need to do, we should do some visioning for the future, what type of facilities we're going to need, and how we're going to go about doing that. So these, this is just kind of a teaser, and, as I would speak, I would say, and things to think about as we start setting up for the budget workshop.
So, Mayor, when, when do you plan to do the workshop?
Probably be in February.
The other thing is, Rich, I've read through these, and can I make a couple comments? So that my reading won't go in vain.
Sure.
Okay. Item number six and 14, I believe they are duplications.
Which page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, 244?
Mm-hmm.
Room number two?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Then if you go to item 40, under room number five, oop, excuse me.
It's under seven.
I'm sorry. Page 246, room number seven. Continue, continue to participate in regional transportation forms. Shouldn't RTC be in there? Claude?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Add RTC? And then, 30, I'm gonna go backwards now, you guys. 36 and 37, and that is page 245, the last two at the bottom. Somehow, those are dealing with the airport, and so we should put the airport name description there, like evaluate the need for additional airport, insert the word airport. And then, also on 37, and construction of the airport runway enhancement project. Just insert airport. And then, lastly, I don't have any lastly, I figured that out myself.
Okay, well, again, these are, yeah, these, these are in our budget document, and it was putting the document together, going through the departments and what they had put in as their goals and objectives and their accomplishments, and so we borrowed from those.
Rich, I do have one more item.
You're good.
And that's dealing with, oh, on page 246, if you look at the title right below the middle of the page, 2015, 2016, progress on citywide goals. I recommend that we say progress and accomplishments, because as you read through those, there are accomplishments. So if we insert progress and accomplishments, that's all I have. Thank you, appreciate it.
This is a document that's already been published, will be something that you will update for the next budget cycle, but these, this is already part of last biennial.
Sure.
Shelley, is it possible to put dollar numbers or staff hour numbers on these 46 things?
I think it would be great to be able to do that, but we, our accounting system isn't that granular, and if we did get that granular, and we could create job costing for all these, but we, and we could set it up, but I, we would need some staff to manage it.
Project accounting yet, but just in terms of where the council wants to adjust the budget, it would be kind of nice to know if item 44 is a hundred thousand or a million.
Yeah, I under, yeah, and it's, it's like, we can maybe come up with some rough parameters about how many people are in there doing the work, or how many dollars we're spending. We would need to start tracking all these, and it's, it's a significant effort to get there. This is kind of that...
I'm not so worried about what we do after we start doing them. I'm wanting to see what it's gonna cost, what we think it's gonna cost to do them.
Okay.
As we do the budget, to say, no, we gotta take some of those off the list, just like you said.
Okay.
If you're gonna do something, you gotta take something off the list. I would suggest you have two columns, a range, you know, this is a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, this is one million to five million. And so, you know, the total at the bottom is gonna be pretty different, but you'll be able to go through each of these during the budget planning and say, well, that's only a thou, $10,000, let's not even talk about it. But if there's one that says a hundred and fifty thousand, better talk about it. So I don't know, you probably have to go to different parts of the staff to get those estimates, but I think it would be very, even though I'm not gonna be in the budget workshop, it would be very valuable, I think, to you guys to be able to say, what am I not gonna do because I wanna do this?
Okay, it would be, I agree.
Budget workshop, are we potentially looking at budget workshops?
So it'll be at least a two-day workshop? There's no way that all of this will get done in one day? And it, it could need to be longer than that, but initially to start with two days and then take it from there. Some of us are working, can we have it like late afternoon, evening? It'll probably be two full days.
We have two full days left. Shelley, when you and I and Bob met, we talked about having a couple of pie charts that described how, how these various goals would, or goal headings would break out in a pie chart. And so once we do this, this range of cost, I think we ought to do that pie chart, so you can kind of say, we're spending this much on, on economic development, or we're spending this much on urban center, and maybe we want to switch those around. Think that can work, too, to do these estimates?
This is kind of, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, this is kind of like budgeting by priority, where you have all these things and they have a cost to them, and then you have so many dollars, and then you prioritize the activities by cost, and when the revenues are done, you draw the line, and everything below the line falls away, and everything above the line is acted upon. And it's, it's going to take some work, I don't know, we can get some rough stuff, I think, put together, but not as, probably a range-type thing, but that's where departments bid on different programs or projects, like Perks will put in a bid for providing special events and activities. And three special events and activities will cost this amount, five or six or seven will cost this amount, ten or more, or ten, that type of thing. And that's pretty simplistic, but that's one way to look at it, because we've been adding things and just absorbing them and doing them, and we're, we're getting to the point where we just can't keep, we can't keep adding, you know, but we have growth and we have a need, but there's a lot of desires out there.
During the workshop, I don't think you're gonna have a list that you can draw a line on. I think you're gonna have people wanting to move that list around, and so we need to figure out a way to do that, either on a computer or with yellow tags or something, so that you can eventually get to that line, cutoff line, but...
Okay, we'll think on that, come up with something.
Any other suggestions for Shelley for the budget workshop? Because that was what Bob and I and Shelley were aiming this agenda I'd have had, was what do you want to see in this, or what tools would you want, what do you want to see in the budget workshop?
I think we've got our work cut out for us.
Great, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
So now it's time to go back to the W. Mayor.
Okay, are there any other discussion items? Any other new business? If not, let's look at the matrix. Any changes you'd like to make to the matrix? Yes, Councilmember Michelosa.
Under salmon color.
Yes.
I'd like to add cemetery update.
And we'll let it be scheduled when, Darryl?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like next month.
We can take item nine off.
No, you could.
We could do it like in February after the year's closed out.
Also, I'd like to add sister cities update. Lastly, I'd like to add multimedia-dash website. Well, just, just have a presentation on what changes have been made, because I know there have been quite a few changes made, and show us how wonderful it is, because it is a good document for the citizens out there, but I think that...
Which, which document? I'm sorry, Bill, I'm not...
Oh, the website, just...
The webs, okay.
Just the general website, yeah.
It'd be good in doing that to identify which of these goals that addresses, you know, the overall equality of life, whatever it is, as we do that.
They really, they really have done a great job on the website, but I don't know how many guys use our website, but...
I would like an update on court hearings.
What kind of court hearings?
Because I was, since that is one of our highest calling in our cities, and I'd like to get an update on data and all that, so we can talk, we could talk about it.
Just, just to make sure I'm understanding, are you talking about the number of cases filed, the number of cases that are...
How many, how many have? I know some of them are very touching, but it would be nice to have some type of data on what's going on in our city with DV.
Let me, let me work on that. Yeah, it may, it may be that most of it's gonna be police, but, but I'll get at least, I'll work with the police on putting together the prosecution end of it, so that it's one before.
Councilmember Holman?
Following up with that, Councilmember Troutman, well, the police department is working on a model domestic violence firearms control, and so that might be a good time to present the progress from Chief Lee and his department on DV model firearms program.
They did come to our city at our last regional law and safety, they were here, and they talked about it, and they presented the whole, the whole thing to, right here at our city, and we didn't have anyone in our city here, except two of our police officers.
Councilmember Wagner?
On the fire and seal, are we looking at any buybacks or any kind of programs like
It's a model, it's a model policy developed by the prosecutor's office and the courts and the police, and Chief Lee is a member of that.
Surrendering your guns, there's a program. They started this two years ago, and they started it out as a pilot program, and they wanted, Auburn was going to, I, I raised... raised my hand to have Auburn, and I was told no, so, so it went to some other cities, and it's been, uh, they've been doing a lot on, in that, trying, the prosecutor attorneys are, are really working hard on it and everything.
That's essentially a buyback program, isn't it? Is that what they're doing?
You know, it's so that when you are, um, a victim, you can declare how many guns you think are in the household, and then the police will go in and do a random check and take possession of the firearms, they found that when it was, when they did the pilot, they found that people voluntarily were not always honest. And that it's better for them to, um, know ahead of time an estimate, and then to go in and just show up and take possession of those firearms, and so the police and King County Public Health have come up with some ways to.
And Chief Lee, listen.
Councilmember DeCorsi?
I'm gonna help the human services, I'll have to go back and revisit the work that the task force did on homelessness, and go through that matrix list of what they had to do, for some of what we were at.
We're going to reconvene the task force to get an update from them, so we can wait till after, so that.
With that, I'm going to adjourn, thank you, thank you.